John, I don't know if Jen told you, but I am doing the work session, so whenever you're ready. I know I see four members.
She did, and yes, we've been waiting with bells and bated breath or whatever they call it. So, yeah, for workshop, I don't know why we get an echo here, but we thought we'd spend this part of the meeting discussing the new law, right?
I'm sorry, John, you're very hard to hear.
Can you hear me better now? Yeah, this is bad. Is that better? No, she can't hear it.
Are all the mics, can you hear any of us?
Can you hear me okay? Because if you give me a thumbs up, I can just do it. Very cool. Uh, so guys, should I stop talking?
No, no, keep going.
Okay. So, um, the work session today is going to be about the electrification local law that is on your agenda packet, in your agenda packet for review. So I'm just gonna kind of give you a little background and walk you through what the law is. To help, I made a PowerPoint, so you don't have to look at my face the whole time. Can everyone see that okay? I can see it on the machine. Awesome. So, we refer to this local law as the all-electric building law. Um, and you'll get a feel for why we'll call it that. But I wanted to give you a little background, whoop, a little background about kind of where this came from. Now, New York has taken some pretty big actions recently to focus in on our goals to address climate change. So in July, July 18th, 2019, New York adopted the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. In November of 2021, New York voters approved the Green Amendment. And then in December, on December 19th, 2022, the New York State Climate Action Council adopted its final scoping plan to advance New York's national leading climate goals established by the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. Uh, so just a little background about what happened most recently in December. The New York State Climate Action Council adopted its final scoping plan to reduce New York's greenhouse gas emissions by 40% by 2030 and no less than 85% by 2050. The final scoping plan recommends that by 2050, 85% of homes and commercial buildings are going to be electrified with energy-efficient heat pumps and thermal energy networks that encourage the state and municipalities to promote local laws to achieve this electrification. They refer to these laws as zero emission codes and standards, and they also encourage energy benchmarking for buildings. So all that happened when the city council wanted to explore what its options were and what might the law look like. Now, I think it's important to be aware of some things that are in the pipeline that could happen simultaneously. We have the governor's budget proposal that just came out. In her budget proposal, it includes a requirement that the installation of fossil fuel equipment and building systems in any new one-family residential building of any height or new multifamily residential building that's more than three stories in height shall be prohibited on or after December 31st, 2025. The installation of fossil fuel equipment and building systems in any new multifamily residential building more than three stories in height or new commercial building shall be prohibited on or after December 31st, 2028. There's also separate legislation proposed that provides that the State Energy Conservation Construction Code, according to the Energy Code, shall prohibit infrastructure, building systems, or equipment used for the combustion of fossil fuels in new construction statewide no later than December 31st, 2023, if the building is less than seven stories, and July 1st, 2027, if the building is seven stories or more. These, um, these pieces of legislation, they do include exemptions. So for the state budget proposal, exemptions include exemptions for generation of emergency backup power, anything in a manufactured home, or anything in a building or part of a building that is used as a manufacturing facility, commercial food establishment, laboratory, laundry mat, hospital, or other medical facility, critical infrastructure such as backup power from wastewater treatment facilities or crematoriums. Uh, in the bill that we have pending, it said that notwithstanding provisions of the legislation, the Building Code Council may exempt systems for emergency backup power for buildings specifically designated for occupancy by a commercial food establishment, laundry mat, hospital, or crematorium. So similar exemptions to both the governor's bill and the proposed legislation. So with that in mind, let's talk about what we have going on in Beacon. So on February 6th, 2023, after several workshop meetings, the City Council of the City of Beacon introduced a proposed local law to create Chapter 106, Article 5 of the Code of the City of Beacon entitled "All-Electric Buildings", to require electrification of new residential and commercial buildings. The purpose of this legislation is to establish a local energy code supplement for all new construction and major renovations to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, mitigate the effect of global climate change, advance the clean energy economy, promote the public health, safety, and general welfare, and protect and secure an individual's right to a healthy environment as it requires terms of Green Amendment. The goal is to eliminate obsolete natural gas infrastructure and associated greenhouse gas emissions in new buildings where all electric infrastructure can be most practically integrated to reduce environmental and health hazards produced by the consumption and transportation of natural gas. So where do we get the authority to adopt this local law? Well, Section 11-109 of the New York State Energy Law. Uh, and subject to the provisions and requirements of that section, the City of Beacon is allowed to adopt a local energy conservation construction code that is more stringent than the Energy Conservation Construction Code of the State of New York. So the Energy Code for the state at this time does not require electrification. So the standards proposed in our legislation that we have before you tonight are more stringent than what the Energy Code says. But that's, that's okay. Uh, we will have to send the law up for review. Anytime you're adopting a standard that's more stringent under this provision of 11-109, we will have to get a sign off from the state that this is okay. Uh, the city, we also argue that the city has the authority to adopt this type of law based on the Green Amendment, which was adopted as Article 1, Section 19 of the New York State Constitution, which guarantees each person's right to clean air and water and a healthier environment. So with the Energy Code in place and the Green Amendment in place, we feel that we really have solid ground to move forward with this local law. Now, I also think it's interesting to note that we're not alone in this. Um, in December of 2021, the New York City Council passed legislation to ban fossil fuels out of new construction starting in 2024. So the New York City law means that new buildings, few exceptions, will be all-electric and emit less carbon, all while improving local air quality and making occupants more comfortable. So effectively advance fossil fuel systems in new buildings and renovate ones, pushing to make all new buildings completely electric, similar to what Beacon's doing. Uh, this affects, the New York City law affects everything from how the building is heated to the kind of stove that will be in apartments. The requirements are going to be phased in with new low-rise buildings being required to comply by 2024, schools required to comply in 2025, and larger buildings to comply by 2027. The law covers almost all new construction and renovation with exceptions for manufacturing hospitals and restaurants. Um, the New York City law focuses on emissions, and the equipment to be in place has to be very, have very low emissions, and that's what they faced. In the town in the city of Ithaca, they also adopted similar legislation. There, if you look on ECO, there's the complicated point system that they put in place. But effectively, by January 1st, 2026, all buildings shall be built to have net zero greenhouse gas emission and shall not use fossil fuel for space heating, water heating, or clothes drying. Uh, their law requires that all new buildings are constructed in such a way to produce 40% fewer greenhouse gas emissions than New York State Code requires, and will require that, uh, will require that new, um, new construction be net, net zero, like I said, by 2020, uh, starting in 2026. This is an overlay to the State Energy Code, which includes its own efficiency requirements, including lighting, ventilation, and other requirements that have to be met. You still have to comply with the New York State Energy Code, but on top of that, you have to comply with the town and city of Ithaca's code supplement. And that's exactly what we're doing here in Beacon. We're adding this as a local code supplement. It does not override the Energy Code. It supplements what's already included in the Energy Code. So in Beacon, what does our law apply to? The law applies to new residential construction, new commercial construction, and major renovations. So the definition of residential construction, commercial construction, major renovations is set forth in the law. We have defined residential to be any building covered by the Residential Code of New York State as well as any building that is classified in accordance with Chapter 3 of the Building Code of New York State in groups R2, R3, or R4, including accessory dwelling units. Any portion of a mixed-use building used for residential purposes shall be regulated as a residential building. Commercial is defined as any building that is not included in the definition of residential building. And includes any portion of a mixed-use building used for commercial purposes. Then we have major renovations. Our definition of major renovations in this legislation is any construction or renovation to an existing structure other than a repair or addition where the work area exceeds 75% of the heated floor area and involves the replacement of new installation of a heating or hot water system. Changes to ventilation and air conditioning systems are not considered renovations of the heating system. So it would not trigger compliance with this law. What is not covered by this legislation is the use of fossil fuels to power emergency backup power. That can continue. Uh, municipal water and sewer facilities will not be required to comply, and any project that receives site, site plan approval from the planning board prior to June 30th, 2023. The reason for that last bullet point is because we're trying to address projects that are going to be phased in, that have received planning board approval but might not be constructed right away, or might have one building constructed with a couple buildings constructed throughout, you know, a 10-year period. So we want to make sure that we're fair and practical in the way we're drafting this legislation. So that's why we have that language in place about the planning board approval prior to June 30th, 2023. So, the meat of the law talks about the all-electric building requirements. What are they? So what we said was effective on January 1st, 2024. No building permit application shall be accepted by the building department, and no building permit issued for new construction or major renovations of residential buildings which require the use of fossil fuels to power any equipment or building systems therein, including space heating, water heating, cooking, and clothes drying. Uh, the next bullet point says the exact same thing, but makes, we want to make sure it was clear that any residential portion of a mixed-use building is also going to have to comply by January 1st, 2024. The third bullet point says, effective on January 1st, 2027, no building permit application shall be accepted by the building department and no building permit issued for new construction or major renovations of commercial buildings which require the use of fossil fuels to power any equipment or building systems therein, including space heating, water heating, cooking, and clothes drying. And again, the last bullet point says the same thing, but with respect to, um, the portion of a mixed-use building used for commercial, for commercial purposes. Now, we understand that it might not be practical for everybody to comply. There are going to be issues, and we might not even be able to predict what those issues are going to be. So the law incorporates a hardship exemption. And so under the hardship exemption, an applicant whose building permit application has been denied may apply to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a hardship exemption and obtain relief from the all-electric building requirements. To obtain a certificate of hardship, an applicant must prove that the, must prove the existence of a hardship by establishing that compliance with this article, compliance with the requirements of the law are financially, technically, or physically infeasible. Now, the Zoning Board of Appeals will have a public hearing. They'll evaluate the evidence presented to them, and the applicant will have to, um, you know, show and prove that this hardship exists and put forth evidence to the Zoning Board of Appeals demonstrating that. But the public and the applicant will both be provided an opportunity to speak on this hardship exemption request. So tonight, you have the law before you for consideration. I know you're probably thinking, well, what, what does the city council want you to do? Well, some of the questions that have come up that you should consider is how should mixed uses be handled? Throughout this process, we've changed it a little bit. Originally, mixed uses were all going to be handled the same as commercial uses with that later compliance date. We then decided that it would, it would be possible to split them up so that the residential purpose, the residential portion goes earlier, commercial portion could go later. And the result of that might be that these developers do it earlier. Right? Why would you have a portion of your building getting fossil fuels and another portion being all-electric? But, so we anticipate the result would be that everything complies earlier. But again, we're leaving it as an option because we don't know what the developers' needs are going to be. But that's something that you, as a board, can, you know, ask questions about or discuss because it really is, um, a pending issue. The other pending issues include, should the law exempt buildings used for industrial, light industrial, manufacturing purposes? At this time, they do not. All those uses are classified under commercial, and so would be required to comply with the law. Um, you might want to discuss what other exemptions we should incorporate. You know, I, we went through what the state has proposed, and the state has some specific exemptions that they're considering. We do not have those same ones in this legislation, but it's definitely something to be aware of and discuss. And then as a board, do you feel that the law is feasible? Do you have any issues regarding developers' ability to comply? We've heard from several developers who seem to indicate that this, the electrification of both residential and commercial buildings is possible, and it's possible pretty quickly. Many people are already doing it and preparing for it. But what are your thoughts? And then does the planning board have any questions or concerns about implementing and enforcing the provisions of the law? Um, you know, we're going to have to put it in place, and then we're going to have to make sure that it can be applied, that it can be enforced, and, um, that it's clear to potential developers and applicants. So these are some of the key questions to focus on and discuss when you get to this part of the meeting tonight and look at this local law. Um, we also have a ton of background information in the agenda packet that we've provided also to the city council that goes a little bit more through what the Climate Action Council did and how we got to this part of the local law. So, you know, I kind of went through it pretty quickly, and I'd love to hear if you have any, any questions.
Thanks, Drew. I don't know if we're able to fix that. Yeah, if you don't mind. Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure we'll have a lot more questions when we get to this part of the meeting toward the end. Um, appreciate the very thorough review. So I guess with a few more, a few remaining minutes in our workshop, does anybody have anything pressing they want to ask Drew? Are you sticking around until the end, Drew? No?
No.
Okay. So we'll ask you our questions. Okay.
I won't be able to answer them as well as Drew.
Any questions at the moment?
I'm curious about whether there's any effort to assess the source of the, like, how much emissions is coming from the source of the electricity that the, you know, these systems are using? Like, are we actually reducing emissions? Or are we just displacing where they're being generated?
That's a good question. I'm not sure Drew can hear us. He can't. That's okay, that's okay. I think, yeah, let's, let's maybe, for a question like that, let's, if you're not.
Jen, maybe I can call you on, on speaker?
Or what we can do is, if I can answer a question and I'm trying to get to the answer to that question, then we can do that, or that can be a question back to the city council. If you're ready to issue comments back to the city council on this, that can be.
Fair.
You're concerned that this is just displacing emissions and not actually reducing.
Yeah.
In the local law.
Yeah. So let's do this. Let's, let's excuse Drew. Thank you very much. And then when we come to the latter part of the meeting, uh, we'll, we'll share out our questions, and we'll have the conversation amongst ourselves. So welcome, everyone, to the February 2023 meeting of the City of Beacon Planning Board. First order of business, to accept any notes, changes to last month's meeting notes? If there are none, then I'll accept a motion to, um, adopt last month's meeting notes into the record.
Motion?
Motion by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Jill. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, sorry, real quick. I don't know why I'm forgetting your name. Did you, were you able to put that list together of the public comments?
Uh, no.
Or, there, there are quite a few listed within the application itself. So I'm assuming that's, that's some total?
Everything that we received is added to the agenda.
Okay, so they're in the packet?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. That's everything?
And they have their names attached to it.
That's all I needed to know. Thank you. Um, so with that, we will go to our first agenda item.
John, are you, can I do the, announce the opening statement that we did?
Oh, I could. I don't have that in front of me, though.
Or for next time.
Yeah, we'll, we'll share it next time. Uh, first item on the agenda, this is to continue the public hearing on an application for special use permit and site plan approval for hotel and event space 1113 Walcott Avenue. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Happy post-Valentine's Day, everybody. Uh, for the record, Taylor Palmer with Cuddy and Fader on behalf of the applicant. Tonight, I'm joined by the architect, R.A. Siegel, our traffic consultant, Rich D. Andrea of Colliers Engineering, and Mike Bodendorf of Hudson Land Design. We're also joined by our sound consultant, Mike Bajanti from B. Lang Associates. So we have two Mike Bs. We've got plenty of Johns on the board, so now we got an extra Mike B. joining us. We're also joined by the applicant, Mr. Gavin Hecker. And Deborah Adamson is our landscape architect for, or landscape designer, I should say, for the project. Um, we are here for the continued seeker review of the project and for a site plan special permit. Uh, we're also here in continued public hearings for the project. We were last before you in December. Um, we had to take some time off to get our sound consultant on board to respond to the city's sound consultant. And we've also done some revisions to our event management plan and the traffic and parking conditions plans. Since then, we did submit a supplemental submission to you on January 31st, and we introduced even further and more significant limits on the hours of operation, the capacity of the event space, the number and types of events that are being held in space, because those were discussions about what the intent of the space is, and Gavin will speak more, of course, to what we're proposing for that accessory space. Um, and hopefully, these have helped further mitigate against any potentially significant environmental impacts. Some specifics, just to help sort of digest. We do have a visual, which hopefully R.A. will bring up, that shows our matrix, so to speak, of the, what I'd call the alternatives analysis. Not only the existing conditions, but what was originally proposed and has been significantly revised. And these are always in response to your comments and the comments that have been made by the public throughout the process. So in our updated submission that's posted online, the applicant has eliminated events on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays. So those days are out now. No events will take place on those days 365. Well, I realize that's, they're not 365, but those days will not, there will be no events on those days. Um, we've also capped the number of events per year at 160. That's, and, and we've also limited the events to no later than 9:00 PM on Thursdays and Sundays and holidays. I know this is some, some of this is hard to tell, but it's all in our, our submission package and in our, our matrix. And that we will be no later than 10:00 PM on Fridays and Saturdays and holiday eves. We've also restricted any rock, I think, AKA, I think Jennifer Gray and I have called them Megadeth concerts because, again, not what we're doing here, or DJ events. Um, and those have been limited to 9:00 PM. So we've, we've taken where those events, which were concerns about patrons leaving the facility, specifically those types of events, so we've reduced those down to 9:00 PM as well. So that's regardless of the day of the week that the event is held. At the recommendation of city staff and for ease of review by the board, um, we have submitted that alternatives analysis and matrix. Um, that, I think, will hopefully help us get there. So R.A. doesn't have that, but that's in your, um, your, your packet. That includes all of the breakdowns. So we'll, we'll go through that in a minute, but I want to bring our sound consultant up before we go through the matrix of the changes. So, as it stands, the applicant is now proposing a maximum capacity of 180 attendees for those limited number of events. We had originally proposed the 500-person maximum capacity space. Of note, out of the 160 events, that could be held if every possible day was filled. So I know that's sort of the, the metric we've been looking at. Not that this is going to be the instance, but because it could be, we're evaluating all of this in the, it could, um, in those cases be. Only 40 of those can actually be maximum capacity. So only 40 events a year can be the max capacity, 180 persons in the space. And only 80 of those can be held later than 9:00 PM, and of course, no later than 10:00 PM. So we've, we continue to constrain the project, continue to reduce the capacity, and we're trying to show as an alternatives analysis that all of these, all this does is further reduce any potential impacts. We've also discussed this and included this in prior meetings, and we think it's important to note again here, I don't know if that's saved by the bell or not. Uh, the applicant is willing to condition any approval upon the proposed event restrictions that we've included in our management plan. So that would heavily restrict further the project, anything that interferes with the management or structure, and that's designed to get people out, get them dispersed, and in a ready fashion to get them out of the property. Because again, the concerns of the board from a noise perspective haven't truly been around the, the event space itself, because that's inside. No outdoor events. Um, we have no, um, nothing will be outside in the parking lot. Sorry, John Clark, I know you're ready to party, but there are no parking lot outdoor event space like Bank Square across the street. You know, or, or the DJ from 8:00 to 2:00 AM, according to the website for Billy Joe Ribworks across the river. As our noise consultant will also mention in just a minute, we did include an acoustical supplemental report, which responded to your city's consultant's sound report. I believe they're on the Zoom tonight as well. And our report found that the project will not generate sounds exceeding the city's daytime or nighttime noise standards, and will not have any potentially significant environmental noise impacts because any produced sound levels would be consistent with the existing built environment, the adjacent off-street parking areas, and busy Route 9D Walcott Corridor. It was important to also recognize that our sound report, the heroes that we gathered, was conducted on a Tuesday in the winter. So one of the lesser busy times in Beacon and one of the least busy days of the week. So there was no band playing with amplified music at Bank Square, and there was no DJ or Latinate at Billy Joe's Ribworks outdoors across the river. It's also important to note that, that again, played till 2:00 AM at night. It's also important to note that the noise measurements demonstrated that the important to note that the noise measurements demonstrated that the existing ambient conditions surrounding the site are also elevated because of 9D and the train station and the existing car, apartment complexes, the garbage trucks that go through, and the tenants of those, and walkers and passersby on the existing sidewalk network. Furthermore, the report details mitigation measures that we can implement for both the indoor events and concerns related to.
Hello, 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 hello?
I guess we got Frank. Hey, Frank. That was probably like 120 dBs.
Frank, I hear you, but I hear nobody else.
Yeah, they can't hear us.
Oh, they can't hear us? I'll let that continue to work. I was Frank's on the traffic piece. So we've also agreed to limit indoor events to 95 dB. So that was represented in our report, and that ensures that nothing, that internal, inside-only events will not have impacts outside of the hall space. And I already made my John Clark joke about the parties in the parking lot. So that one's, that one's out. We've also agreed to install acoustical glass inserts over the stained glass windows that have several features that will prevent any noise leakage in that regard. Lastly, we related to the patron voice comment, which are, you know, similar conditions to existing apartments today, where people park and pull in in 9D. A sound dampening wooden fence, the type of fence that was proposed, I guess, was not consistent with the material. So we've adjusted to reflect that a wood fence has been added based on the sound, your most recent sound consultant comments that came in, I believe it was yesterday or the day before. So that will act to further reduce any patron noise and vehicles using the driveway at the property. So we're trying to make this a successful space. I know it seems like we continue to go back to the drawing board, but that's because we're trying to do a full alternatives analysis as part of the secret process. We've spent a lot of time trying to get to a point... Get to it. I'm getting, getting, get to it.
Get to it, please.
Is that my voice?
The issue is, there's a problem with Zoom.
Right.
So the focus is.
I just wasn't sure if that was me.
Can't be backing it myself.
And then we turn the speakers on, we get back to the back. So Amanda is working really hard to try to fix.
If only we had a sound consultant. So, so where I was going with the secret presentation is, we're trying to get to a point where the board and the public can be comfortable with an adaptive reuse of a former church space. The existing conditions today, we know we've said this before, but it's important to consider that if, for example, you were to go through a full environmental impact review beyond the extensive supplemental review we've done for these specific impacts to help mitigate them, that they look at an alternatives analysis, which we've done, and we continue to reduce this project down to try and meet those criteria, including your special permit criteria. But what's very important to note here is that those numbers have been, they've really been brought to a point where we're really looking for your feedback and maybe that of the public about what could bring us through that threshold. Is it limiting the hours of operation to 8:00 and 9:00 o'clock, consistent with the noise ordinance? What meaningful input could we have here to finally push this to a point where this could be a usable space? It's a church today. Today, in the existing conditions, if, to use the board and the public's comments before, the worst-case scenario, every day it operates at max capacity, that's 350 people. No controls, no mitigation, no management, nothing. We are proposing a very strictly monitored, regulated, organized component, restricted the number of days, the total capacity, and we're willing to commit to doing more if the board sees a path to make this viable. Otherwise, it's making that church space, which we're trying to preserve and insulate, unusable, unviable, and it effectively would not be effective use of that space. So we're really trying to get there, and hopefully, these reductions have put us there. But if the board or the public has input about what can tip that threshold, it would be very effective and helpful to us, and hopefully helpful to bring this, you know, great project to the site. So with that, I will turn to our noise consultant. Pleased to walk through his comments, and then, of course, anything from the board or if we can get the noise consultant on, we'll go from there.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you. My name is Mike Banchi. I am a senior scientist in B Lang Associates. We are a natural resources consulting firm. I'm in my 43rd year of doing analyses that include mostly air and noise analysis. I was hired to take a look at this particular project and to make a determination as to the existing condition, the proposed impacts, the potential for mitigation as it relates to sounds and noises that may be associated with the proposed prophecy hall venue. The prophecy hall venue is a conference center, so the music is sort of ancillary to that. It is not supposed to be a concert center. There may have been some confusion because the music that was used internally with the last analysis, you know, was in fact, you know, sort of a rock thing. And so I think a lot of people got the idea, okay, well, this is going to be a rock concert venue. And it's not. It's a, it's supposed to be a conference center, but music will be a part of some, if not all, of the events. Whether that's live or amplified, it could be either way. So let me start with the existing condition. Okay, first of all, we have a site that's on Walcott Avenue that's on Route 9D, New York State DOT Road. It's considered a principal collector arterial. That means that it has a lot of traffic. And since it, so we went out, we monitored it on a Tuesday evening. And again, it was during the winter. We monitored peak PM traffic. So that's, you know, in the rush hour. Rush hour tends to be 4:00 to 6:00 PM, maybe 4:00 to 6:30 PM. And then we also measured 10:00 to 11:00 PM, because we know that was the maximum, you know, release time for the, for possible events. I understand they've been somewhat restricted now, but still, that's the maximum release time. So in the ambient environment, what we found, we started on the east side over by Walcott Avenue. I'm using roughly northeast, south, and west. I know it's not exactly that. But with Walcott Avenue being called the eastern side, basically, we had 64 decibels is what we were getting in the peak PM hour. Your Chapter 149 standard for residential areas is 55 decibels at the property line during daylight times, during daytime. Daytime ends at 9:00 PM in the statute. So we were getting basically nine decibels over. The way sound works, I don't know if anybody's gone over this with you, raise your hand if I'm boring you. The way it sound works is it's a logarithmic scale. It's not a direct scale. So if you have 50 decibels and you go to 60 decibels, that's not a 20% increase. That's a tenfold increase in power, in the wattage that you're hearing, okay? And it's approximately a doubling in what you hear. So that's how it works. So even though it's, it looks like mathematically in straight lines, oh gee, 50 to 60 is 20%, it's not. It's a doubling in sound pressure or sound perception and a tenfold increase in power. That's kind of the way your ear works, is that, you know, that when the pressure hits it, you have to have that tenfold increase in power for you to sense that doubling. Anything less than, say, three decibels on the A scale, you can't hear. You know, it's almost imperceptible. Perceptible noise changes start to occur up around six decibels. And then something which could be considered more intrusive would be 10 decibels, 12 decibels or higher. Now, we're also dealing with an A scale. In other words, when, for example, music is produced, a lot of times, modern music, rock music, has a lot of bass in it. Well, most people don't hear most of the bass. And so what happens with the A weighting scale is you take the actual decibel levels and you weight them, how the average human ear hears that. And that's also how your ordinance is set up. It has a little bit of a funky provision, I want to say, a little bit more qualitative provision for nighttime. And that's that it has to be plainly audible inside the adjacent structure.
It can't be.
What?
You said it has to be. I think you meant to say was it can't be plainly audible.
It can't be plainly audible. Yes. Yeah.
Sorry, what's the?
So that brings up two things. Number one, you're no longer at the property line. Okay? You're at the whatever, wherever the first wall is. And then you have the wall itself as a mitigating feature or the, or the windows.
Uh...
Is that me?
Definitely.
Yes, that's me.
You have one second.
Okay. Is that a little better? Okay. Very good. So basically, when you, when you get out to the, having diverted to that discussion, when you get out to the east side, Walcott Avenue, you're running about 64 decibels. I have 63.6 decibels during peak hour. And after 10:00 PM, we were getting almost 60 decibels. In other words, it came down, but it was still five decibels above your daytime standard. So that is not, that's not considered quiet residential. Quiet residential is down in the mid-40s or so. So it's more than a doubling decrease to get to that, that level from, from the front yard. The north side, which I believe is the lofts, on the west end lofts, you see actually, in the peak hour, you're getting 55 decibels. So you're kind of right, 55.1. So you're right at the daytime standard at the property line. And at night, but at night, it declines to 45. So it does quiet down considerably at night. But what you're also seeing is, if you look at the east side during the peak hour, you go from 64 down to 55 during the peak hour. So you're actually, I think what you're seeing is you're seeing the parsonage as it exists, being a partial block and a mitigating feature for that particular sideline. And this was opposite, the apartment's not opposite the parking lot, because it has its own parking lot, it has its own associated noise. We tried to avoid that. From what I understand from my monitoring team, there was the garbage, for example, backed up, you know, to the garbage thing, and it was banging and all that kind of stuff that happens with those kind of utilities. So that's going to happen with multifamilies. You're going to get utility noise. And you also have a common parking lot. So you have the same kind of noises in terms of the cars going in and out, people going in and out in that lot, as, to a certain extent, as you will in this lot. But there's no time restrictions. We went to the west side of the, of the property, and that's before it goes down into the cemetery? Yeah.
Just a real quick question, so we're all clear. And I think Lana has a question, too. What you're describing right now are baseline readings, current conditions for ambient sound?
Yes.
Yeah.
For ambient conditions, yes.
Yeah. One quick question. When you made the measurements along Walcott Avenue at around 10:00 o'clock at night, and you said that the decibel measurements dropped to about 60, was that continuous or was that kind of an episodic measurement? And if so, what seemed to be driving that?
Well, the way you measure an LEQ is you measure it as the equivalent. That's the standard. In other words, it's not a spontaneous measurement. There were higher measurements, say, when a truck goes by. There were lower measurements with an electric vehicle goes by, for example. And there might have been some pauses in between. So this is the accumulation. This is kind of like a, like an average, I want to say. It's kind of a geometric average, because it's not a straight arithmetic average, of the sound over that time.
But it was probably driven mostly by traffic?
Oh, yeah. Yes, it was driven by traffic. Again, it was, it was a winter evening. So there was not pedestrian traffic at this time. I would expect in the summer that it would be.
Driven by vehicle traffic.
What's that?
It was driven by vehicle traffic on 9D.
Yeah. That's the dominant sound. Yeah. Occasionally, you'll get sounds like the railroad intrus, when it goes by or when they signal their horn. There was no music across from Newburgh that was coming into the, into the sounds, from what I understand. There was nothing going on, on the other side of the river. So basically, it's the traffic that's dominantly it. But there are some other inputs.
Thanks.
On the west side, we didn't go down the hill to the bottom of the hill. We did the top of the hill, kind of behind the building. During the peak hour, we had 55 decibels. So you had dropped below that standard. And again, part of that is distance. You know, you're getting back from, from Walcott Avenue, and also you have the building. You have the parsonage as a sort of a blocking feature. Then we went to the south side, and we came up again with 55 decibels on the south property line during the peak hour, and then that dropped off to 49.4. So let's say 50 decibels in the 10:00 to 11:00 o'clock hour. One of the, again, one of the things you have to remember on this particular property is you have the two buildings. And the parsonage is an old wood, older wood frame building. It's got multiple lines and it's kind of broken up. It isn't like a, like a modern warehouse will have a flat wall. You know, this is not that. This is all broken up. So what happens is it helps to attenuate the sound, because the sound will come in, first wood, first of all, wood helps to absorb it a little bit. But even if it's smooth, it'll hit those corners, it'll hit those, those peaks, and it'll break the sound up by reflecting it in different directions. And you have the same thing actually with the church. The church is an old concrete building with a, with a good brick face. And it also has slight buttressing on the side. If you look at the walls, again, they're not smooth. About 18 inches or two feet at the base, you have a series of concrete and brick buttresses that come down. So again, that gives you, number one, a nice brick face, which is all kind of broken up. It's concrete and brick. Generally, the heavier the material, the better it is at absorbing sound. So if you have a slab building with, made of concrete, those members will generally dampen the sound more than, for example, a steel building. Like if you're in a hotel, let's say, and you have people above you, you'd much rather have a slab of concrete than a piece of, than a piece of steel, as a general matter. There may be other circumstances. So that's a heavy material. It's not flush. It's got a good broken up surface. And then there's a lot of angles to it. So it's not just a plain surface. And so that's, you know, that's something that's going to happen, is that it's, that's going to be helpful on the site for noise. Now, I want to start with the proposed action. With regard, I can do it a little backwards. Let me start with the venue itself. The venue is going to be interior to the church, 95 decibels. The exterior was, let's say, it was 28 decibels less, so let's make it easy. So with a 95-decibel music, it'll be 65 decibels on the outside of the wall, the way the church is now. However, that was near the windows. And right now, those windows are not built for sound reduction. They look nice, but they're not built for sound reduction. So when you put that acoustical glass on the inside, which is more of a building permit sort of thing, you can generally expect about a 10-decibel decrease. I think the prior expert very much overestimated that. So that means you'll, you'll probably wind up with about 55 decibels at the outer wall near the windows. So 65 is what the measurements say now. I would expect 75, 55, when the acoustic glass goes in. There was some talk in the, in the town's consultant, noise consultant, about escaping noise from the entrances. So there are really three entrances that would have that as a concern. The first is the front entrance, right on the front of the church, out towards Walcott. The second is going to be a new entrance in the corner. The back of the building sort of pops out a little on both sides, doesn't go as high. And it's going to be in the interior corner, opposite the hotel, there's going to be a door there. Not only, that'll be an entrance to the café. And then the third door will be the door out to the deck, proposed deck on the back. But what's happening is, the interior space where the church is now and the sanctuary is now, a portion of that is going to be the venue space. And the front of it, the front already has the North X. And so there's, it's already separated by a room to get to the exterior doors with doors. So there's one separation. But another space is going to be put in there, I think a gallery and some other space. So there'll be another set of walls and rooms with interior doors before you get to the venue. So that's going to, I did it, I did some calculations in my, my report, but that's going to, that's going to really minimize the space as, when somebody opens the front door, the chances of all those doors being open all the way to the interior are pretty minor, because they're supposed to, they're going to be kept closed. Then on the, on the backside, where you have the side door and the deck door, there's going to be the café. There's already the space back there behind the church, behind the North, the North X itself. And that's going to be the café. And basically, there's going to be doors separating that from the venue on the interior. Then to get to the side door, you're going to have to do a 90-degree turn through additional doors and then the door itself. So again, you have this interior buffering space with interior doors. Same thing with the café out to the deck, is you're going to have this space, and then you're going to have one door out to the deck. And that door will be automatic, so it'll be closing. The idea is to set it stays closed. And from what I understand, the deck will have no chairs. It will certainly have no music. So you have, you have basically a viewing space, where you walk out and you're viewing, maybe you bring something from the café. And that really, I think, had really been taken care of before I got here. That portion of the wall that there's a southern, there's a southern wall that goes back, and then a piece of the wall, a piece of the church sticks out. But the main church wall is going to be extended along that deck. I don't know if you've looked at the plans. And that is going to be pretty effective. It's supposed to, it's going to be a brick wall. The lower wall will have window openings. I would recommend possibly treating them architecturally, in other words, glass block or something like that, so that they still give you that feel of a church window, but that there's no opening under the deck, because the HVAC is going to go there. Now, we'll get to the HVAC separately in a minute or two. So that would be built, suspenders for that. But when you get up to the deck itself, the wall continues up for a second story. And it's 10 feet 8 inches high, which is plenty high enough to attenuate voices. It's going to, again, be a brick wall. It's going to, again, be a brick wall, there will be no openings. And there was some discussion, I'm not going to answer the noise consultancy's analysis of our report point for point tonight, I'm going to be providing a separate report, but one of the things he had mentioned was, there could be some flanking around that wall to the apartments, but the deck-
Hang on, hang on, sorry, sorry to interrupt you. So you moved from the detailed description of sound mitigation from the inside of the building, now you're outside the building?
Out on the deck.
Just wanting to follow you.
Yeah, no problem, no problem. So when you get to the deck, the wall, that second wall that comes up opposite the deck, there's two, there's one for the low, below the deck, and then one for above the deck, because the deck is above grade considerably. You have another wall that's 10 feet 8 inches high, and it's brick. And the deck and the wall will end simultaneously, there was some discussion as to, some confusion, the two of them will end together. Also, they're far enough out that they're pretty much at the west end of the Riverview Apartments. And so I'm not worried about the flanking noise coming around, because the apartments don't extend past that at this point. And again, we're talking voices. The voice, the voice, we'll talk about the patrons in just a minute. The patrons' voices that I used, and again, this was a confusion, the noise consultancy said I used 65, and I did mention 65.
65 what?
Decibels. When you, when two people are having a normal conversation at about three feet, that's 65 decibels. So that's something, you know, that's something to keep in mind. But what I used was 75 decibels, I doubled that. And maybe it got skipped in the report, but it's, I used 75 because I figured, okay, it's going to be later at night, again, you know, people might have had a little alcohol, or be excited about the venue, or excited about the music, and so they'll be talking a little bit more loudly. So I used that in the analysis on the deck. And again, the wall was sufficient mitigation for that, so by the time you got to the property line, you were below the 55 decibels for the daytime standard. And what I used for both apartments was, I used a 28 decibel reduction number. That was measured at the church at the windows. It'll probably, it's modern, both of them are pretty modern construction, and so I would expect the reduction to be higher than that. But if I take 55 decibels at that property line, and then I move it a little further to get to the apartment building, you know, at the edge of the apartment, and then I take 28 decibels off, now I'm down around 30 decibels.
Where are you getting those 28 decibels?
The church walls had a mitigating effect between the interior and the exterior.
So I think what you're trying to explain to us is you're trying to translate exterior sound of patrons' voices to what it would sound like inside one of the adjacent residences, right?
Right, because that's the standard.
I'm assuming, you're assuming a level of 75 decibels for the outside voices?
For the voices.
And then attenuating that to the exterior wall of the adjoining apartments, and then you're using a 28 decibel reduction through the wall of the adjoining apartments to come up with a possible level-
Right.
-inside the-
And that gets me down, that gets me down like, okay, so I'm at 55, I know it's hard to follow, you know, just in the air. If it's 55 decibels at the property line, and not even accounting for the extra distance, but just taking 28 decibels off of that, now I'm down at 30 decibels. And 30 decibels is whisper.
30 decibels inside-
Inside.
-the residential unit.
And the reason I'm doing that is because of your standard. You know, it's plainly audible in the interior.
The noise law that says, we have this noise law that says you can't have audible-
Right. And that's, a lot of noise laws say, you know, at the building, you know, outside it's got to be blow over, but yours says plainly audible inside. Now, audibility, generally, like something you can hear, if you have good hearing, if you're young, generally will go down to about 20 decibels. So you can hear something, but whether it's plainly audible or not is another story.
Question though, then, again, it has to do with, and I'm tracking from the source, across the property, through whatever's on the property, it's going to start to diminish at the property line, you're not accounting for the space between the property line and the unit, which could add something, but then a unit, the sound reduction attributable to the construction. Does that 28 reduction take into account any kind of fenestration being opened?
Generally not, no. I made, I usually make the assumption, particularly with modern construction, it's all HVAC.
The law also says that plainly audible with all doors and windows closed.
Yeah, okay, that's true. Oh, that is also true.
So you wouldn't-
I get what the law says, I'm trying to translate this into what's practical, so I want to understand. I understand.
The way I think about audibility is, not that I can't hear that people are conversing, but I can't understand what they're saying. So that's not plainly audible. I can hear it, but it's not plainly audible.
Yeah.
And again, I, you know, I've, again, audibility goes down to 20 decibels, so audibility's pretty low. And the ordinance specifically says plainly audible.
Right, but I would, I mean, I might question that interpretation of, does plainly audible mean you can hear conversation, but you can't understand it? I would say that it's a nuisance if you can hear it, potentially, and so I wouldn't, I don't know, that'd be an interesting, oh, you got the Webster's, plainly?
We can do that for the next three months.
Just save it, we'll need more later.
Yeah, exactly. It's called subjective standard for it. It's reasonable.
Anyway, continuing a little further on, so that's dealing with the audibility of the deck, of voices at the deck. What I did for voices going to the parking lot was the collection area, the pickup and drop-off area is supposed to be in that sort of crux of the church, where the new door will be. So you'll have a new door there, people will either come out the front or out the back, and then they'll meet their ride there, or they will go to the parking lot. So what I decided to do in the analysis was to take that 75 decibel level of conversations, and to put it center of the parking lot, behind the hotel. So to take it out of that corner and put it right there, just assuming that people are dispersing or whatever.
Sorry, just another quick question to put my head in this, to sort of picture, right? So when you say conversational speech at 75 decibels, is that two people talking to one another, or is it multiple people talking? Or does the number of people talking at the same time make a difference?
Yeah, conversational, conversational is 65.
I understand, I got that part. You're using 75, that's why I mentioned-
So I'm using 75, and so that's somebody speaking rather loudly, two people speaking rather loudly.
So it's two people speaking rather loudly?
Yeah.
Does the, does the fact that perhaps there will be more than two people at a time in an area talking have any impact on that 75, does it increase because there are more people?
I mean, if you've got a crowd in there, you know, I would say if you've got six or eight people, then you probably go, you might go three decibels higher, in terms of additive factors, because it's not quite mechanical sound. It's not like, it's not like if you have two air conditioners next to one another, it's not quite like that. Because voices go up and down, and there are different qualities to them, and things like, and not as like, you know, they're not stamped in a factory and mass-produced. But anyway, what I did was I took the voices again to that middle level. And in looking at it a little bit more carefully today, one of the things I realized is the, you know, the, most of the area that will be exposed to the sites, this venue's parking lot, is also a parking lot. It's the parking lot for the apartments. So when you get to the apartments themselves, a lot of that is going to be-
For, you mean the hotel?
The hotel, well, no, the apartments, the-
Which apartment?
The west end lofts.
I see.
When you get to that actual structure, the parsonage and then the extension that's going backwards to the west for the hotel will actually be a mitigating feature, I didn't really account for that. Because if you go, you know, if you're in that parking lot, it's not until you get over towards that northern property line that your direct line of sight, once that extends, right now you are, you know, you can stand in the middle of that, you look over, because the parsonage is shorter east to west, that's going to increase substantially. So when you have those voices in the back there, what I looked at, and I said, you know, that, in terms of the property land standard, the daytime standard, 9:00 PM or earlier in the day, that's 55 at the property line. So what I did was I inserted a six-foot fence, solid fence, it can't be a gap fence, and there's about a two-foot topo rise when you get over there, particularly when the road is going to be cut in. It's a little elevated from what it's going to be right now. So the road's going to be cut in, the land is going to rise a couple of feet, and then you'll get to the property line of the apartment building. And so this fence will be two feet of topo rise, and then six feet of fence. And again, it's got to be solid. And that gives you about an 11 decibel reduction, 10.8 is what the calculations come up with, so say 10. And that will get you to the daytime standard, by the time, for sure, by the time you take those voices and you transmit them across the balance of the parking lot, and then you get to that fence, and somebody standing at or near the property line would experience that reduction. Now, it's different for the apartments, again, because the apartments are above line of sight of the fence. So now, if you look in the report, and again, this might have been misunderstood, the fence is not additive to the building in that case. Because the fence is down here, and here's your property line, and then there's, I think, 40 feet to the building, to the building wall. And so those apartments are 40 feet further back, but that's where the wall loss will come in, the 28 decibels. And again, you know, I was getting in the 30s in terms of decibels, probably in the low 30s, 30 to 35. So again, again, in the interior, so that may be audible, but I don't think it would be plainly audible, because again, 30 decibels is what's considered a whisper. So it's there, you can hear it, but I don't know if you could understand it, as, you know, what people are saying. So anyway, that was kind of how I dealt with the patrons' voices so far. I did not do anything out the forward entrance, and out along Walcott with regards to the patrons' voices. And the reason for that is DOT is the owner of Route 9D's right-of-way. And their standard, and that's where you're going to, by the time the patrons, and I'm going to do something at the front door, but when, by the time the patrons get to Walcott Avenue and are on the sidewalk, they're part of 9D. And the standard for 9D, if you go, if you're doing noise work for the DOT, New York State DOT, it's actually an FHWA standard, but they accept it, is 67 decibels in the front yard of a residential area. So it's considerably higher than the city's standard. And it takes into account that you're going to have, you know, you're having traffic. So you already have, you know, on that side of the property, you're running 60 decibels between 10 and 11 o'clock at night. So you have, you know, my feeling was, by the, when they get to that sidewalk, and when the cars get out onto that road, or if an Uber comes up and picks up, it's part of the traffic of 9D. You sort of transition from the site itself to Route 9D. So I didn't address that, but I'd be willing in the next analysis to pick a spot in the front, right by the church. Yeah.
So everything you're sharing with us now is helpful, but in somewhat in response to our traffic, the city's tra, excuse me, the city's acoustic consultant's review of your initial analysis. So you're providing, and that's why I'm sitting here wondering whether he can hear us yet, he can't. So you're providing some update to what you've reviewed of his review.
Yeah, again, I had, I got it yesterday afternoon. I've had a chance to review it lightly, you know, in other words, I haven't, noise, you got to sit down, you got to do calculations. I haven't had a chance to sit down and calculate things, and go specifically point by point. So I'm trying to incorporate some of that, you know, to say, yeah, you know, I'd like to be responsive to that comment, because I, you know, it makes sense, people coming right out of the front of the venue, let's run that and see what happens.
So to some degree, just procedurally, our acoustic consultant is with us, he's on the phone, he can't hear us, couldn't hear anything you just said in response to his review of your report. So I don't necessarily want to ask him to share his review of your report, because it's now somewhat old relative to your current notes here tonight. So I'm confident that you're going to respond to his review.
Yes.
And so that's how you'll have that communication. I would have rather have had the benefit of our acoustic consultant share his observations, but again, he's going to, he's going to share with you, because he couldn't hear us-
Yes.
...things that you've already responded to, so I wouldn't want to necessarily have him go through all of that.
So you don't want to hear a summary of his memo tonight?
I mean, we have it on the record.
Yeah. Because we've been, Amanda and I and the folks on the call have been emailing, trying to troubleshoot the issue. The question was asked, should they stick around?
Sorry, I'm not a studio guy, so I, I probably be of some assistance, but-
Why isn't there an AV consultant here tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah, again, so we could ping him and, you know, ask him to review his notes-
No, I agree.
But it's now, it's now kind of old compared to, based on what the applicant has just shared in terms of his observations on our consultant's review.
Yes. We do have his memo, it's available on the website, members of the public have the opportunity to review that memo. We just won't hear the summary live, it's been sort of live.
And to some degree, we'd be going back in time, and we'd be spending time hearing from our consultant from, you know, some time ago, basically, so-
Yeah, in any event, I will be responding in writing.
Thank you.
To which, you know, your consultant will review the applicant's consultant's response, and hopefully can move forward with that.
Okay, so let's keep the conversation going that way, through the review, the memos, again, all a part of the public record. And so is that, does that cover?
Yeah, that's pretty much what I wanted to cover, I noticed there might be one further question.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, of course, anyone across the board, sure.
Out by 9D, if there were, you know, a group of 10 or so people talking at, you know, 75 decibels, what's the implication for, you know, the aggregate sound at that point?
Again, I didn't calculate it in my first round, so I will take a shot at that, you know. But again, you know, that, that location is dominated by Route, you know, Route 9D.
Right, but is it going to be made louder by, you know, a substantial group of people-
Right.
-talking at 75 decibels?
All right, I'll take a look at that.
And the other scenario is that you could have a group of those 10 people going to a parked minivan, or a couple of street parked cars in front of a residence, you know, on the opposite side of 9D.
Okay.
Just curious, what's the baseline decibel generated by, you know, average automobile accelerating?
Usually in the low 60s, depends on where you're standing too, and it also depends on, these days, what kind of engine train it has. You know, I mean, I mean, a lot of us have already been surprised walking through a parking lot, and EV backs into us.
You can't hear it.
And so, yeah, you can't hear it. So hopefully, you have, you know, whoever buys that buys the sound package, you know, that reinvents the sound for you.
Yeah, standard combustion engine-
Quite literally. But standard engine noise, standard tire noise, you can get a lot of tire noise too, usually in the low 60s, low 60 decibel range.
Is any part of it-
Single car, it goes higher as you multiply the cars, you know. Trucks will be up in the 70s.
Okay.
Truck, you know, a good way to look at it is, you know, you can, cars passing by, you can have a normal conversation, you know, assuming they're not doing 80 miles an hour, assuming they're doing 30 miles an hour on, you know, Walcott. But if a truck goes by at 30 miles an hour, it's going to interfere with your conversation. So now that truck's up in the 70s, you know, 10 decibels higher, you know, interfering with your 65 decibel normal conversation, whereas the cars are down here going, and again, assuming not a lot of cars, and they're not going really fast, you can talk while the cars are going by and understand one another.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just thinking, more noise generated by cars in the parking lot starting and accelerating out of the parking lot?
Yeah, noise from cars and vans is a little different too, because the source is lower.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I mean, because you're, mostly you're talking tire noise and exhaust, although a lot of them are just not that high anymore, and the speeds here are going to be fairly low. But again, the source is down lower too, so that whole notion of a fence on the northern property line for that northern thing works nicely. And I don't, I don't think there's going to be any canyon effect here, because what we're going for on that fence is it's got to be solid, and it can't be planed wood, it's got to be rough, or roughened in some sense. And then secondly, on the hotel side, you're not going to have one solid wall, it's going to be ins and outs, and it's going to move around, and that kind of like, it just breaks the sound up a little bit, when it, when it, you're not just getting reflections back and forth.
That was another question I had, there's, I can't think of any, but in your review of the application around additive reflective mater, sound reflective materials as a part of the application, meaning?
Yeah, I don't see a lot of that here. Because again, you have that, what I consider to be a pretty nice church face, you know, with the brick, and just the bricks themselves have that, you know, patterning, and you have all the different little buttresses that come out. And the hotel, from what I've seen of the plans, again, is not solid walls. I don't know what the finishing material was, but I assume it's not going to be just a, like a slick vinyl, and it'll probably be some kind of textured material, but we can get more of that from the architect too, so. Okay, that was my assumption, yeah.
Couple of clarifications. The exit drive is right on the property line, there's no two foot, it might be two feet now, but in the plans, the driveway is right up to the edge, so you won't get the differential on the fence, unless it's on a retaining wall. And the west end loft is twenty-five feet from the property line, not forty.
Okay, well, I hadn't measured it, so, you know, so it's twenty-five feet, but also, yeah, I mean, it is, I think when you get to that little grade area, it's been my, my experience, and I'm not a road engineer, but I've seen it often enough, you're going to wind up with a bump there, you know, maybe, maybe a small retaining wall because of the fact that it's right on the property line. Because there is a rise, so you have to deal with that rise somehow, and that road's probably going to, got to trim down a little bit to make it work.
Not on the plans.
What?
A retaining wall would be on the plans, it's not there.
Okay.
So.
I mean, retaining wall, we're talking like a knee-sized wall, too.
So sorry, when you say bump, I'm, believe it or not, I'm dealing with a, you know, serious acoustic issue in my work, and our acoustician referred to a bump in terms of a noise reduction, is that what you're referring to?
No, 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 topographically.
Got it, that's what.
Yeah, topographically.
Just wanted to clarify.
So, so if, you know, it was noted by the consultant that I had a six-foot fence, and why did I have a eight-foot calc, eight-foot barrier in my calculations? So that's why.
That's the bump you're talking about.
I think the road now is sort of in a gully, and they're going to bring it up to grade.
Okay, yep.
To level with the property line, is my guess. The other thing I think is interesting to note is, you said the River Ridge, ten to eleven, which would be the peak noise time of a release of a big event, was in the forties in terms of ambient noise.
South side was, ten to eleven was about fifty, forty-nine point five, four.
Yeah, well, you said in the forties was, you know, sort of quiet residential neighborhood, and then the cemetery behind that is even quieter, I would assume.
At forty-five, yeah, so now you're starting to get into a quiet residential neighborhood.
Right, so people walking down from the event through the cemetery late at night are going to, you know, be a substantial addition to the ambient noise in that area.
We can close that at any time that the city sees fit, so we can close that off.
You can close off the walkway in the cemetery?
Yep, at a time as appropriate to the board. We made that representation.
So you're willing to close access from the church part of the property through the cemetery, cemetery, excuse me.
Well, I think it was in the PM, so post.
After a certain time.
That's what I was about to say, after a certain time, what time is that?
Correct.
Have you established that?
We presented tonight that if the board is, if there's a, if there's a consideration that the board is looking to make this really, to further address more than we've already mitigated, we could incorporate that, shutting and closing that walkway at a time.
But if some patrons parked at the train station, wouldn't that then cause them some kind of confusion about?
There are also existing walkways down to the train station that are not through our site, that are not otherwise limited, so those exist today too.
So, Board, we should consider that specific access and hours related to it, just kind of mark that. Any other questions that this part of the applicant's presentation?
I have one question, and that is, I think when you were giving the intro presentation, you said that there's been a decision made not to have any events on Mondays, Tuesdays, or Wednesdays.
Correct.
And that includes no daytime events?
Correct.
And why, I'm just kind of curious, why would you do that? Because if there's a conference center use, what if somebody wants to have a professional conference, and it's just a daytime only, like eight to five? Why would you sacrifice some of your business viability and the ability to make a profit and support the?
We're trying to make sure that we're managing the expectations, the neighbors have expressed concerns about having events every day. So even whether that's a nine to, you know, two, or ten to four, those are still events, those are still people coming to the property, so we've reduced the, to try and mitigate against potential community character impacts, especially perimeters.
I understand what you're offering, and I guess I appreciate the efforts made to satisfy public concerns, but it seems like some of the proposed mitigations are at times of the day then, you know, it's like, it just seems like you're cutting off your nose to spite your face, and I don't quite understand it, so.
I think, to your point, it's what they, what the applicant has seen as being a, when you would actually have the majority of these events in the space.
It seems that the concern has been the nighttime hours.
Absolutely, yes.
Would the hotel and restaurant be open Monday, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays?
Yes.
Cafe?
Yes.
So just not extra events?
Just not, not events, correct.
So if I understand correctly, on the days when you don't have a hundred-and-eighty person event, where you have a hundred-and-thirty, the cafe is still open, so you could potentially still have a hundred-and-eighty people in this?
No.
No, they close the cafe if they reach that one-eighty.
No, I'm saying a hundred-and-thirty event.
No, so that would be, it would, that would, one, I don't, do you have the exact number? Right, the cafe's only fifty people, so the max you could have in the space is, I'm not going to do my terrible, I guess eighty total, is that the number for the balance? Again, you put me on a math spot, never going to work here, but I can, we can get an answer to you in writing with respect to, we've reduced the numbers, we've reduced it down so that there's no, the maximum number of events can only be on certain days and certain hour to a certain point, and the cafe is the same control, so the cafe is only fifty total people in the cafe space.
I understand, but when you have an event that has a hundred-and-thirty people, the cafe is still open.
It could, yes, it can be still open.
And you could have.
Wait, wait, I'm reading right here, it says, no more than forty, a hundred-and-eighty-capacity event.
Right.
Okay, cafe closes if event is greater than a hundred capacity.
Yes.
Okay, so you could have a hundred-and-fifty people.
Mathematically, that, based on what was just said by the chairman, yes.
Okay. Every, every day?
Well, no, because Monday, Tuesday.
I mean, every day you're open for events.
Right, and then the number of events are limited as well to those, for those max-capacity events.
Says no more than eighty days of events per year, ending after nine PM. That's not worded correctly, ending after nine PM. Does it, should that say ending at?
Later, no, later than ten PM. They're saying that go past nine, go past nine o'clock, there are only eighty events a year that could go past nine o'clock, if every day was, was used for an event.
So then there's no more than forty, so I just read a hundred-and-eighty-capacity events per year, ending after, so no more than forty of these large events per year ending after nine.
Correct.
But ending at ten.
Yes.
Right?
Oh, no, we do, we have that table, Ari is just killing me here, it's in your packet, you have a matrix in your packet.
No rock or DJ concert, concerts after nine PM.
Right.
Is a wedding a DJ concert?
What's a rock and DJ concert?
No, no, is a wedding a DJ concert? I mean, where does it, you know, where does?
So we, we were, we were playing off the city attorney's preference to Megadeth, which is obviously not even a band, but, or maybe it is.
What's, who's Megadeth?
Right, so this is, again, gets into the subjective, we're trying to be as responsive as we can to the concerns. There was concerns about when vehicles were coming to, you know, offload band equipment or otherwise, so we've reduced the ability for them to do that after certain hours, and now we further restricted the concerns of the amount, you know, putting a group of people together and leaving those events. Those were the biggest concerns, as the board continued to express, about leaving and the patrons leaving, so that's what that was intended to do.
I see.
I think that is a relevant question, though, if you say rock and DJ concerts, then a wedding could go, you know, up past that ten.
Just leave it at a DJ.
With a DJ or a pretty good-sized band.
If the sound generated by any of these functions don't go over ninety-five dB.
Right.
Five dB.
It's all, no matter what it is, is limited to no more than ninety-five, that's the proposal of the sound consultant, and that's what's being employed in our application. So whoever it is, DJ Gunn or, you know, the guitarist formerly known as DJ Gunn.
DJ Grandmaster Gunn, too. Sorry, how, how does one, I know we had this conversation on another application about how one puts a manifold or a muffler on the ninety, like noise, right? How do you guarantee, as you're generating it, that it's not going to go over ninety-five dB?
You can, there are acoustic, again, I'm not a studio guy, but there are acoustic limits that you can put on, on the sound, in terms of what the output will be in terms of power. It's basically if you limit the power, that's what you determine your decibels. And again, I'm not in, I'm not a studio person, so I can't tell you exactly what that is, but those, that exists. The other thing too, that you find too, is particularly, I mean, if it's not a rock concert, people want to talk, you know, and you want to have conversations, and so when the music gets up that high, you know, a lot of times that's the limitation just naturally in the event, because, you know, nobody can talk, and you can't converse. So, so there's a, there's sort of a limiting factor there, but you can also put in a hard stop, you know, in the, in the, in the sound software itself.
Well, if I learned anything tonight, well, you could scream at somebody, what is somebody's, what's the decibel level of somebody screaming?
I mean, at the top of your lungs, probably like eighty decibels.
So you wouldn't be able to scream over ninety-five decibels anyway?
Yeah, I mean, it gets really hard to hear, even at the top of your lungs, it gets, I mean, you can, you can also get closer, you can be screaming in each other's ears.
Can you give an analogous, like, you know, what, a ninety-five decibel in terms of a music performance, what's, what does that analogous to?
I think I said it's negative.
That's the limit? Like, I mean, like, you know, sitting at a pit orchestra, you know, for a symphony concert, what's, you know, I'm just curious.
No, yeah, a pit orchestra won't get up to ninety-five.
Okay, so this is amplified sound?
So that'll probably get up in the eighties, particularly, you know, if you're down in the, in the lower portions in the orchestra seats, but I'm just trying to think what might get you to ninety-five. It's still pretty loud. I would say you're standard, yeah, yeah.
Noise, windows.
Yeah, I mean, it's all inside, yeah, this is all inside. You're looking at some pretty, you're looking at some pretty good rock and roll, but you're not looking at, you're not looking at punk rock, you know, or.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to reconcile some of the statements about, this isn't going to be a rock concert venue, but we're going to have a max of ninety-five decibels, and so it's like, well, what is ninety-five decibels? And it's like, well, it kind of is like rock and roll, but.
Well, I was just trying to get at that, if you can't shout over, it's pretty damn loud.
Right.
Well, yeah, but again, it's all inside. But this is not on the deck outside.
Understood.
This is interior.
I understand.
And then you, and it's inside a church, it's inside an old church.
And it bears repeating, the proposal that we're referring to, we've been planning always for the worst case, in existing conditions, worst case, the Church of Jennifer Gray could be the next best thing, and everybody, every day, all the hours of operation, that could be the next megachurch. We're, we're not a concert venue, period. We are a event space with, we're focused on not-for-profit and other inclusionary, you know, performances in the space, a conference center, that's what we're proposing. These events can and will happen, but we are heavily restricting the number, the capacity, and the operations and how to get people in and out. So we understand that these are the focus, and these are the potentials that could have an impact, but we are mitigating those through all of what we're proposing. So it's not three-sixty-five, it's not until eleven PM, it's not five hundred people, we've created plans to get people in and out, and we've reduced the total number that can be there and how to get them in and out of the space, and what, and what these types of performances can be, and how loud they can be. So inside and outside, we've really done a number to try and put ourselves in that position to not have an impact on the neighbors, and while repurposing and preserving a church, an historic church on the site.
Thanks.
That's it from our presentation.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for the time.
No other questions from the board at the applicant at the moment? Good? Okay, so we'll go to our consultants who are present, before we go to the public, knowing that we are still in public hearing. So John, Mr. Clark, if you will.
The letter I point out that this is a special permitted use, it's not as of right, there are a list of conditions that have to be met before any approval of a special permit use, and one of them requires that the location, size, and use, and nature, hours, and intensity of the operations will not conflict with the existing permitted uses on adjacent blocks. And so I'm suggesting that potential hours are most disruptive in the late evening, and the board would have the ability, under the special permit condition, to restrict hours. It also should be noted that the varied hours, occupancy, and number of events will be extremely difficult for the city to monitor and enforce. And I think that's the problem I'm seeing, you're going through all these contortions in terms of parking lot security and people on the site, you know, monitoring traffic and trying to stop people from dropping off on Route 9D and, and having different hours for different days, and it's just going to be impossible for the city to keep track of all this, and we would have to rely on the good graces of you to abide by the conditions of the approval, and that seems to be difficult, when it's so complicated a venue to try to fit on this parcel. We talked about the fence.
You're talking about enforcement.
That's my main comment, I still have questions about drop-off and pickup and that sort of thing, and how you're going to enforce no parking on side streets, when the only way to really enforce no parking on side streets is to get the city to pass a resolution saying there's no parking on that side street. You can't just put up a no-event parking and expect people to abide by it, or the city to enforce it, because they can't enforce it without a no-parking sign by the city. So there's, there's a lot of complication here I still see problems with.
Yeah, so just as far as parking, you're asking the city to somewhat accept a burden?
No, I think we've reviewed with the traffic, respectfully, I think we've reviewed with the traffic consultants.
You're, you're asking the city to accept, you know, the use of a resource, so, and then again.
Well, we reviewed that with your traffic consultant, they agreed with our analysis.
I understand, I understand, I'm making an observation about a resource, I'm not talking about the letter of the law. And at the same time, it's a, you know, a situation that could, as John mentioned, engender on street parking, no matter how many times you say, don't park on the street, it still could happen and become an issue that the city then has to deal with. That's my only point.
Understood.
These are the real-world things that happen, as opposed to the thing that, things that happen on paper, so.
I think the last point is just reaction to what they said, they, you know, you stressed that it's not a concert center, it's a conference event space, but what we say is, you're going to pains to make late evening hour or evening hour events possible, and restricting or limiting daytime events when conferences would be more likely to be held. So it just seems like you're saying it's not a conference center, but your hours and operations are all designed about mitigating a concert.
Well, that's responsive to the board and the public's concerns, we have no objection, or I don't think we would, we're self-imposing limits beyond what would be the applicant's and the owner's desire, but we're doing that so that there's no, the comments that came up were, worst-case scenarios always, no, we haven't been talking about what is actually expected to take place, the conferences and otherwise in the space, more, with more regularity. So we, we're not trying to go backwards, we're trying to limit.
The observation is, is that the self-imposed restrictions appear contradictory to somewhat your business plan, that's all, right, did I sum that up right?
Yeah, or it's a concession that doesn't really go towards the root of the concern.
Well, it does, it takes away the nighttime, but it takes away the nighttime and it takes away the daytime, it takes away both, it takes, you know, it, it's an accessory to the hotel, the hotel's going to be open three-sixty-five, it's an accessory space. We're trying to be responsive, it's somewhat unfair to say that the applicant has taken days completely off the table, again, to try and address comments from the board and the public. I appreciate this nuance, that if you're a conference center, you should be able to do conferences during the day, absolutely, we'd love seven days a week, that's what we started with.
You've just decided not to do them, I get it.
We decided not to do them out of a concession to reduce potential impacts, because if you can't do them Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, there are no impacts.
But as much, so as much as, as much as we want to mitigate adverse impacts, I think at the same time, if the, if the special permit is approved, we want the business to succeed. So, yeah, so it's just like a cognitive dissonance on giving up daytime events for a conference center.
If, if, if the model is not, you know, as far as functionality, you know, we're, we appreciate that comment, but we're trying to be responsive in all ways, shapes, and forms, reducing numbers, capacity, total days, events, you know, we tried to do it by how many events, what types of events, number of people, so we're, we're trying to be responsive, but it would be helpful to get feedback from the board about what specific hours that we should limit it to, and if there are any other comments that we can incorporate, because if that's the case, the applicant's here, we've been listening to, we want to make this work, we want to preserve this church, we want to make this a very productive site, but if we limit this to five people per. But if we limit this to five people playing tag once a week, that space is not going to, to function. It just can't. It's not viable, so.
Thank you. Mr. Russo.
So I have a number of cleanup comments with regards to the plans, some additional plans requesting be added in, specifically those that are going to be approved by DOT for the work out front, and some other documents that need to be submitted with regards to the stormwater maintenance and easement agreement. But I think the bigger picture, and it's been covered over and over here or discussed, is the noise and the traffic.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant before we go to the public by the board? And so I'll also note that as far as comment, we have a number of written comments from members of the public that have been received, they've been entered into the record, and I'll just note, we have comments from a last name Cayman's, comment from, I'm not sure if this is last name Joseph, Marilyn Joseph, as well, oh gosh, I'm not going to get this right, Peachak, last name LaRocco, Green, Jaffe, the River Ridge Board, Comito, Kalish Joyce, Wall, another River Ridge, River Ridge One, Noijo, Herring, Weiss, Hammond Plaza. I'm assuming these River Ridge and Hammond Plaza are multiple individuals. Again, they are, and they're on the record. Simmons Bloom, RRV Hammond, Bumel, Stannard, Bloom Romano Rivkind, or Rivkins, excuse me, Samarge, I'm not necessarily sure I'm pronouncing that right, forgive me if I didn't, Tig Dewey and Brooks. And with that, we'll go to anyone else here tonight with us who would like to add their voice to the public comment.
A year and a half later.
Name, sorry.
Teresa Kraft, Beacon. A year and a half later, and concerned residents are still opposed to this project. The revised proposal being discussed tonight should focus only on the actual event attendees' numbers on the table in tonight's packet and not be distorted by citing past numbers that do not meet a positive note, only to make tonight's numbers look acceptable. Nor should we care what music and noise level is being played at another venue in another county across the river, no less. A big question is who is going to manage the management? Please consider the strong points addressed in the current sound report by professionals at face value. Hired vehicles will not adhere to the official drop-off location, choosing instead the curb on Walcott Avenue where the patrons will wait at their convenience. Please do not disperse, people do not disperse in an orderly and efficient manner, once, maybe never. It would be reasonable to evaluate the sound levels from 10 patrons' discussions occurring on Walcott Avenue sidewalk as received across Walcott Avenue at the Academy Street residence multiplied tenfold. This is not a one-off event. The sound of patrons walking on the proposed pedestrian path through the cemetery as close as 70 feet from the westernmost unit of River Ridge has not been evaluated. Also, you need to be reminded that clearing out an old underbrush and fallen trees is not preservation of a historic graveyard. That alone is a major undertaking. It is sound, it is sound engineer's experience that people leaving a venue with elevated sound levels often speak in elevated levels, including laughing. The report states in a single van will produce 65 decibel sound. This level assumes only one vehicle traversing the driveway at a time, which is unlikely at the end of any event. Ultimately, if complaints arise at night, an enforcement investigator inside a dwelling will make the final regulatory compliance determined, evaluating whether the source is plainly audible. That's like catching someone making a U-turn on Main Street. They've got to be caught in the act. Everyone watches them do it except a qualified official that can issue the ticket red-handed. Allowing this developer's team forward with their plans is putting the cart before the horse. There will be no way to revert and correct the issues once they open the floodgates. Don't send them back to the drawing board. This is the wrong venue at the prime location. Please do not grant any special permit approval for this project.
Clark Kedman, Two Wilson Street. This is a very complex problem, and you all feel it. But I would postulate that it's not just honoring the property rights of the investor and the reliability of being able to get a return on investment in recognition of property rights. The, the market price, in my opinion, suffers from the baggage that the property comes from, and thus it becomes available at what might be a discounted price. And so ingenious investors come along and try to repurpose something that is approximating the highest and best use for the property. A music hall, a wedding venue, a conference center, all very logical conclusions to be had by an investor. The trick here is that the property is part of a historic cemetery. And so the quandary in the marketplace of the investors is, well, I'm buying at discount because God knows what you can do with a property with cemetery. But I would like to bring to the planning board's attention 9CRNY4287, and it might be a cheap reference, because that part of the historic code refers to the conduct of the state. And so the state highway that provides access to the property automatically enjoins the state in terms of the planning board's responsibility to comply with the regulations as it relates to the molestation of the cemetery, which has yet to be identified on the plans. A fence is routinely regarded to be a physical improvement to the land. So must a grave marker. And from an anthropological perspective, each person buried there should be noted on the drawings in order to have proper review. Now there is a cheap benefit to the city. When the city rejects this particular application, it will have a residual benefit of knowing what's there, where it is, and how to work around it to provide access to the train. As far as I'm concerned, the highest and best use for this property is to facilitate in some manner with the assistance of the state government and the MTA, proper relationship between the train station and Main Street, which is the lifeblood of this city's tax base. And I have no particular objection to the construction of a significant hotel property that is encased in glass and steel and concrete that doesn't give off the ambient noise of the, what, three minutes and 20 seconds, what are we doing? Five minutes or three?
We're doing three, please.
Okay, thank you. I'll be more than happy to conclude, to say that the state regulations would not permit it and likely these people will probably file and form a lawsuit and throw together a hundred dollars apiece and start all over again.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Maggie Fay. I'm here to read a statement on behalf of Gina Samarge, the founder and director of Compass Arts. She wasn't able to attend tonight's meeting. Dear members of the planning board, I've written to you prior in support of the Prophecy Hall project that is planned for 11/13 Walcott Ave. As the director of an arts nonprofit, having a proper facility for theatrical and choral productions is a huge concern for our student ensembles, and Prophecy Hall would be a vital resource for us and the greater community. However, there are additional benefits to both our organization and the community that this venue and its adjacent hotel would provide. As an organization focused on arts and education, hosting professional development workshops and conferences for artists and educators is something of great interest to us. Having a venue with an adjacent hotel opens up possibilities for our organization and others like ours to be able to host multi-day conferences that would make it easily accessible for people to come from out of town and participate. This not only opens up our organization to expanding our reach and impact, but brings people from greater reaches to our city, directly impacting the small local businesses that rely upon tourism as a vital part of their survival. I sincerely hope the planning board can see the multitude of benefits that this project will bring to our city and the intentions of the owners. Simply put, the owners, like all of us, want what's best for Beacon and to create a space that we can all enjoy. Regards, Gina Samarge.
Hi, my name is Brett Moses, and I have been living here in Beacon for the past three years with my wife. I run a small business, and my wife's an artist, works at a general store in Maine. There were a lot of factors that influenced our decision to set down roots in Beacon. Access to nature, lovely Main Street, and a warm and welcoming community. But one of the biggest was culture. From community-run art galleries to Dia Beacon, from the Howland Center to open-mic nights at Dogwood, Beacon punches way above its weight when it comes to arts and culture. We recognize that our arts institutions aren't just amenities, they are central to our spirit and way of life. And so when I first heard about the Church Conversion Project last year, I was excited. It just seemed so obvious. A homegrown arts institution right down the street from my house on Rombout that would create jobs, juice the local economy, designed by Beaconites for us locals to enjoy what's not to like. Since then, I've learned that there is a small but vocal minority who are worried about this project. I truly think they mean well. After all, change is, is a little scary. Then again, what might Beacon look like if we hadn't welcomed other arts and cultural institutions to town? Like many locals, I love talking with my neighbors about city stuff, restaurant openings, bear sightings on Mount Beacon, traffic on 9D. That's one of the fun things about living here. It's through talking with those neighbors over coffee at Traxx or a beer at Max's that I've discovered that nearly all of us are excited about this project. It's our responsibility to champion projects that align with our values, to support small businesses, and to enrich our town for our children to enjoy. That's why I'm proud to support the Church Conversion Project on Walcott Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Dawn Powell Manso, Hammond Plaza. The last time I was here, it was discussed about the modeling for cars entering and leaving, and I questioned four people arriving in a car at the time. I compliment you on the noise consultancy group that you had do this very clear, concise, understandable report. I don't know if you're, I don't know, Jill, you aware of this? Okay, so let me check. Okay, whereas the gentleman who appears to be very knowledgeable, 42 years, you know, that's a lot of years of knowledge, however, if it could be placed in a format similar to this where you can follow it, it would be great. The other thing is that at Hammond Plaza, we've dealt with a lot. Some of you have been on the board for years, you know, a few years, and some of you, if you ask past members, you'll know that people from Hammond Plaza have been here. And a lot of that is based on quality of life. Quality of life is not only when the construction is occurring, it's all of the modeling that goes into the construction and the due diligence that we rely on you all to be our advocates. We're our advocates when we're in front of the microphone or writing you a letter, but we deal with the effects of your decisions. For over seven years, we've dealt with construction at Hammond Plaza in three directions. Years before that, we dealt with the MTA. I don't know if you remember TOD, Transit Oriented Development. We can hear the building from Edgewater currently. So on three sides of us, for multiple dears, almost a decade, we have dealt with noise, we've dealt with construction, but the ultimate into that wasn't a dynamic situation of a venue. It was the potential of having new neighbors and hoping that the developers and those involved would be good corporate entities and at least hear us out without judgment and thinking that we were just whining and complaining. We have owners in our development from their twenties expecting children to, Lord willing, in April, one of our owners will be 101 years old. So I'm here speaking from my resident, but I'm saying what the people at Hammond Plaza have experienced. One good thing that I will say that came out of this, and I'm sure there are more, but one that comes to mind to me is the sense of community. I didn't know the people that lived at The View. I didn't know the people that lived at River Ridge. We were, you know, prayerful that we would all get along and good neighbors, and now that you have the stairwalks up from Berry Street and a new development on Berry Street, you didn't see us here complaining about that development just because most of us were tired and COVID was going on. But it's there, and the community has come along together, listening to all effects. Not, not everybody is against things that are stated, but I personally, I'm looking at my quality of life. We've dealt with a lot. To have this where security, sound, just being able to have a cookout in your backyard without someone coming early for a venue, stroming through the back. Now, this is before this development even got there. We've had that occurred. Again, I mentioned, people relieving themselves because there's not a station, you know, a rest area in between the train station and Main Street. And I know I need to wrap this up, but I just want you to see that it's, it's more than whining. It's quality of life. And as you referenced, referenced the laws, I'm not sure if they are renters or owners that pay taxes as far as individuals, but I'm speaking as a taxpayer, a Beaconite. Doesn't matter if I'm a new or old Beaconite, I'm a Beaconite. And I appreciate the time that you all put in. I believe you're spread a little thin, but that's just my opinion. I appreciate it, and thank you for listening.
Matt Bloom, I'm a resident of The View. Going to keep it brief. My main takeaway from listening to.
Sorry to interrupt, we just need name.
Matthew Bloom. I'm a resident of The View down the hill, which wasn't really addressed too much by the sound consultant tonight, but my main takeaway is that we should keep our windows closed at all times, even in the summer. A rhetorical question, I'm not asking that of you, but once the crowd, 180 people leave the venue and they hit the sidewalk on 9D, does that mean Prophecy Theater is no longer responsible for them? I'm not sure if I heard that correctly or interpreted it. Again, at this late date, 16 months later, what is it? Concert? Is it a wedding venue? Is it a conference center? And as you guys pointed out, if it's a conference center, why not have it open Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday daytime? I think the reason is because it's really not going to be a concert, a conference center. And lastly, most importantly, who's funding this? I think the people who live in the vicinity of. I think the people who live in the vicinity of this project have a right to know, you know, is this...who are the investors? And it's been a big secret so far. I thank you very much for all the work you've put in and for hearing us out. Thank you.
My name is John Bono. I've gotten up here and spoken many times before. Starting to run out of things to say because it just keeps getting repetitious, but I think the word is residential. What are we doing with this thing in a residential area? I would have bought a house next to McDonald's, you know, where I could hear the noise and the value of my house would be as lower than it is. I didn't buy my house. I didn't work and save all those years to have some nice church turned into a whatever it is. I know it's going to end up being a rock and roll joint anyway, but, you know, I mean, you people here, you know, most of you guys that are here that think it's all right, you know, and are backing the project, what would you do if this damn thing was in front of your house? How would you deal with the noise? How would you deal with the people walking up and down your street at nine, ten, eleven o'clock at night? Not just one or two people, you know, a community of people walking up and down there, groups of people all chatting and getting together and drinking. It's...that's not why I moved to Beacon. That's really all I've got to say, you know, it just really stinks.
Anthony Rivers. I live directly across the street, and we bought our place just a little bit ago, and I remember reading about it in anticipation of buying our house. The thought of, well, what am I going to do if this venue is bought, built across from me? I was actually excited about the idea. I moved to Beacon with my family because, as mentioned before, the idea of culture and art, this town does punch above its weight, and that's why I came here. And the idea of having another space that can be open to have cultural events for the community. We have Dia, you have the Dogwood, which is a kind of cultural space of its own, you know, you have the Town Choir, and then have another space like that. It is a residential, but we are in a little bit more of an active area of our residence. This is on 9D, we're right near downtown. It is something that can open up. And the thing that I feel is more concerning is that this is an old historic building. And if it's not utilized for a purpose for the community to have access to, that we can somehow have our student rock bands from all over, some place for our community to do things openly, it's going to be converted into condos. And only those that can afford them, and only a certain class of people will be able to appreciate it. And we don't have access to that anymore, and that's what I don't want to see happen. I would like to see this space where the community can discuss it, and it seems like there's ownership and investors that are listening to the community and want to make the concessions so it can work for all of us, that we have access to it and it can enhance the culture of Beacon. Thank you.
Hi, Steve Jaffe, River Ridge Court. Here we are again, round sixteen, sixteen iterations of the same plan, and this square peg still doesn't fit in the round hole. The newest iteration indicates there are one hundred and sixty days that events can be held. What exactly does that mean? Can there be multiple events in any given day? Can there be four events in any given day? If you add all that up, one hundred and eighty maximum capacity times four, times three for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, that adds up to a lot of people in any given weekend. And it's not very clear from the management plan what they mean by event or how many events they can have in one day. The newest iteration does not solve the parking and traffic issues. Yes, they have the nineteen sixty-four parking exemption, but the cars still exist. The exemption doesn't make the cars disappear. The cars have to go somewhere. And yes, the safety and noise issues will still exist. For these reasons, the nearby neighbors to the Dutch Reform Church are all the more determined to protect our quiet residential neighborhood, and it is a quiet residential neighborhood. For the seventeenth time or for the one hundred and seventeenth time, we'll be here to make sure that it fits into our community. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, Claire Reed. First of all, thank you for all your work. Excuse me, I'm a bit of a call. Two points I wanted to touch on, two things that were said tonight. One was the idea of the attenuation of the noise from the venue to the different housing areas, and I'm talking about Hammond Plaza in particular. And the assumption was made that these were modern buildings, and I think if you've seen Hammond Plaza, you know that it's not a modern complex, and to assume that there's twenty-eight dB attenuation on those walls is probably a really bad assumption. But more to the point, I sat through the beginning, part of the beginning of the work session, I think it's called, where Beacon wants to institute, I guess, buildings that are electric buildings, and I assume that's because of the environment. So the idea that the assumption would be, because we're modern, we would be using air conditioning. We wouldn't open our windows, which seems totally counter to the goal of having energy conservation or looking out for the environment. You'd want to have, if you have nice weather, you open the windows. But if you can't open your windows because, as we said over here, we have to keep our windows shut because even though it's good weather, there's noise coming out, I think that kind of is counterproductive. So I heard somewhere, I think that, well, the law is, you know, with the windows closed, blah, 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 blah. I think that's unfortunate, maybe the case, but that's number one. The other thing was the idea of conversational speech being sixty-five dB. I do have a background in audiology, and there's something that I think I bet a bunch of you have heard of anyway. It's called temporary threshold shift. When people go to concerts or loud events, they usually experience temporary threshold shifts, which can last from a very short amount of time, typically at least a half an hour, usually a little longer. If they do this frequently, or, you know, people who work, you know, who play music for a career, sometimes it becomes permanent, and that can be like a noise-induced hearing The idea being, people who come from a venue where music has been playing loud are going to speak louder, okay? People coming from a venue do speak louder. If there's two people speaking a couple of feet apart from each other, they will speak a normal conversational level. If they are, if there are more people there, they will speak louder. I think that it was, well, yeah, there's, I think the noise expert, if there were like six, I don't think there's probably going to be a group of just six. I think it might be more than that. And it does increase with the, a bigger increase of people. So that's something that just happens. It's well documented, and that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Rachel Rifkin, Hope All Is Well. My husband, he can't be here unfortunately because, oh, the mic. Unfortunately, he's in Albany for business. He did submit a letter, but I will just state a few of his sentiments and then just state a few things for me, and it should be within that three-minute timeline. So I, Dale Brooks, that's my husband, here we are, one hundred, one and a half years later, with sixteen different plan iterations with the same outcome. At what point does it become apparent that applicant is applying a strategy of attrition? If this were in a legal forum, I would move for directed verdict and assert that the actions displayed by the applicant's conduct is lacking in good faith. Specifically, the fact that we are still in so many different plan iterations just shows he's not in good faith because by now you would think they would get it right. And my few comments are, what we'd like to see is what the applicant could do right now, which is a hotel. And I've asked for a floor plan that is to code several times, which he does not have. He still needs a bathroom, a public restroom, and a manager's office. I've also asked for what is his anticipated room rate, because obviously he needs to know what he was going to make for breakeven, cost analysis. He should profit. He is for profit. He's not a non-for-profit organization. I think that's it about the hotel. Oh, and then the public, we've continued to state there's no attendant during the evening, and he doesn't listen. And that's kind of in that not-good faith. I don't know how hard it is to add one more employee when there's nobody there, but that's that. And then in terms of the cemetery, which is very symbolic and historic, I still don't know what his experiences with tombstones. And when he bought the, or when he purchased it, to my knowledge, a tombstone is still a deeded, I think, I don't know your name, sir, made it clear that it's a deeded title to the land. So I don't know, in order for him to put that public pathway through the center of a cemetery, does he need to have those who unfortunately passed, I mean, obviously many years ago, their families relinquish that right to the land? And I hope when he does build, if, well, and I don't know how he'll be able to keep those tombstones safe with the public pathway. And I guess that's it. And I still don't understand how you could do a positive segrah or provide a special use. Thank you. And I think you've got a haircut, Mr. Gunn.
Thank you.
Note.
My name's Tom Herring. I live in River Ridge Court. And what I wanted to do is just address a couple of things that were talked about tonight, just some notes that I made. And it seems like the two biggest issues, or two of the big issues, are noise and parking. Okay, so I had a couple of thoughts about this. I just wanted to bring to the attention and see how they might be addressed. One is, you know, we talked about weddings. I'm still not sure how that is classified. Is it a rock concert? Is it not? Are they going to have them? When can they have them? And I think it's important because we all have our own criteria in terms of what constitutes a great wedding. Could be the speeches, the best man, maybe the bride's father, but I think a lot of people will say a wedding is great because it has great dancing. If you go to a wedding and there's a lot of dancing, it's good dancing, it's a great wedding, more times than not. And the reason why I think that's relevant here is because if you're going to have dancing at a wedding, it's not going to be easy-listening music. It's not going to be soft music, and it's not going to be low-volume music. It's going to be loud. And that kind of ties into what was addressed before, but I think it was kind of glossed over. And that is, we had the sound consultant up here, how do you control the decibels? I think the number was ninety-five, I'm not sure. It doesn't matter, but the point is, how do you control the decibels? There was something mentioned about a power control there, where you can control the power, bring it down, but how is that monitored? How is that, how do you control that? How do you enforce that? I'm not really sure how that can be. So I think that's something that would have to be addressed again in a little bit more detail. And then also, you know, this is a project that is just, I think, has a lot of unintended consequences, some that we have been able to identify, many that you have been able to identify, but I think there's still going to be more that are going to pop up. It's a very nuanced proposal, to say the least. And that ties into the parking. You know, just one thing that has not been brought up is that the parking, which we all agree, is going to be on the streets. How does that get enforced? As a local resident, you know, I don't want people parking in front of my house necessarily that are coming to an event at the venue. In particular, I'm referring to Rombout Avenue, which is right across from where the venue is. It's prime target for parking. People are going to go there. But if you drive on Rombout, you can see that it gets very narrow very quickly. If there's cars parked on both sides of that street, a third car cannot get through that street. Now, the significance of that is that it potentially could create a logjam. If people are coming into Rombout, they're, think of yourself coming up 9D, heading north, and you go around the curve just south of here, and then all of a sudden, there's cars that are jutting out of Rombout Avenue. I think it's potential for something not very good to happen with a bunch of cars there, accident waiting to happen. So I guess the resolution there would be to put no parking signs up on Rombout Avenue. I'm not sure, it's not my area of expertise, but it's something to consider. How do the residents feel about that, having no parking signs in front of their houses where they never had them before? Or having all these cars parking in front of their houses where they've never had them before? So anyway, it does, to reiterate what some said before, the project, I'm all for culture. I love music, but it does still seem like a round peg in a square hole. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carol Zakara, and I live at fourteen Hammond Plaza in Beacon, New York. And I've been a resident of Beacon just about most of my life, fifty years at least, living in Beacon. And so in terms of change that has occurred in Beacon over the past seventy years, I've seen a lot of it. I've certainly seen, and it's been an improvement. We have so many buildings around us, which has created a lot of change for our area and traffic, which, again, traffic was not really mentioned, how we're going to deal with that. But the real, the real issues are traffic, noise, and parking. Those are the three main things that we have to really think about because it's going to have great impact on our city and the citizens of our city. I am not against a cultural center. I am not against having a restaurant. I am not against having conferences, but to put a venue where there's weddings, when so many people have spent so much money on housing in the surrounding areas from The View, from, what's the place right up here? The what? Yes. The lofts and right on 9D. I can't believe that we would even consider putting in a venue where there's music and crowds. It just, I can't believe it. Again, I am certainly not against development and cultural facilities, but to put a venue with weddings, forget about it. It's going to cause all kinds of problems. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Caroline Nowillow. I did submit a letter, and I won't repeat myself, but thank you for this opportunity. So I've been a physician in the community for the last ten years and a resident of Beacon for the last five years. I do have several concerns with the proposed project. The first, and I think one of my neighbors brought it up, was the definition of an event, which is still not clear to me. Is it a conference venue? Is it a concert venue? Is it an event definition to be determined after this is approved? That's a main concern for me. If the main proposal is for a conference center, I mean, that would be great. I just got back from a conference last weekend. The events, the lectures, the medical conference lectures went from eight-thirty AM to four-thirty PM, and then you had free time to explore the city. That would be, I mean, I would love that. That would be the easiest conference to attend for me. But that's not the hours that are proposed. These hours are from seven AM and on into the evening, with some hours ending, well, I guess the event, quote-unquote, event hours, ending at nine PM with another forty-five minutes for one security person plus maybe one parking person to clear one hundred and eighty people off of, you know, their front lawn, their side lawn, which is my property boundary. So that's one of my main concerns. Another neighbor brought up people using their lawns as urinals. I didn't even think about that. about that until just now. There is no actual physical separation between our properties, so I haven't heard how one parking attendant and one security person is going to keep, you know, 180 people, plus the staff, plus the people picking them up off of my property. And that was a concern, I think, one of the board members, or one of the members brought up. So who's going to police loitering? Is it someone that's going to stay around until every last patron off the property? Is it the police? You know, who, who's going to take care of that? You know, the other, I mean, this is a selfish event. I work 24/7 for my patients, so the hours, even though they end at 10 o'clock, 10:45. I was called into the ER last Saturday at 2:00 in the morning, and I had to get up and go, and then come back, and then call the next day, too. So, I mean, I realize that's not everyone's work schedule, but that is mine. And that's about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jane Riley, Stratford Avenue. I've attended these meetings since day one. Nothing's changed. We have a moving target. This does not fit this community. This is a residential area, and we need it to remain quiet. The answer is no. At some point, you have to put an end to this. 16 times, coming here, repeating ourselves over and over again. We get new information, but we seem to have a moving target here. This doesn't fit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Betty Wall, 8 River Ridge Court. First, thank you for continuing to listen to our concerns. There were over 40 letters of concern submitted this month. I submitted one of those letters and tried to convey the many issues that don't go away by eliminating events Monday through Wednesday, days that many establishments in Beacon are closed due to lack of business. As Mr. Clark stated in his 210 letter, quote, "varied hours, occupancy, and number of events will be extremely difficult for the city to monitor or to enforce," unquote. I believe that may be exactly why this complicated management plan is now being proposed, so that nobody can keep track of it or enforce it. The latest response from the noise consultancy once again refutes much of what the applicant's noise consultant has stated. And it supports the major concerns that I and many of my residents, and many of my neighbors at River Ridge and the surrounding developments and residential streets have expressed regarding noise disturbances and people dispersing in a disorderly and inefficient manner. I don't want to take up your time citing specific examples, but I believe it is stated very clearly in your independent noise consultant's document. I still believe there are numerous reasons why a positive declaration should be made, but clearly, this proposal violates Section 223-18C of the City Zoning Code, quote, "Operations in connection with any special use will not be more objectionable to nearby properties by reason of noise, fumes, vibration, or other characteristic in Article 4 than would be the operations of any permitted use not requiring a special permit," unquote. And Special Condition 223-18B1A, which requires that the location and size of the use and nature of hours and intensity of operations will not conflict with the existing permitted uses on adjacent blocks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me? It's Shelley Simmons Bloom, The View. First of all, thank you to the planning board for your careful consideration of this proposal. I'll keep it brief, but there is a lot I'd like to address. I will keep it under the three minutes. The complexity of the new operating schedule is almost impossible to track, and as the discussion we heard tonight was pretty clear, it took some sorting out to understand what it was. But it will force the development's neighbors, which is ourselves, to effectively monitor and police for compliance. So a quick recap, a limit of 160 event days a year, no events Monday through Wednesday. Thursday and Sunday will end by 9:00. Friday and Saturday will end by 10:00. Only 80 days a year can end between 9:00 and 10:00 p.m., and only 40 days a year can end between 9:00 and 10:00 p.m. if you have more than 130 people. I challenge anybody to be able to keep a track of that. If we're forced to approach patrons and ask them to leave our properties to keep the noise down or move their cars from our private parking lots, are we going to do that at our own risk? This shouldn't be a burden upon the residents or the Beacon Police Department. The developer has included a reduction in days and hours of operation, but what does that actually amount to? While he proposes eliminating Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays from the days of operation, we all know this is no real sacrifice because these are the quietest days of the week for the Beacon hospitality industry. It's no sacrifice if the business isn't there in the first place. The adjustment to the hours of operation is meaningless when many events will still run until 10:00 p.m. with 45 minutes extra to clear the property. That's still going to be very late by the time everything is cleared. There's nothing in the latest proposal that provides reassurance that my family's quality of life will be protected and conveniently ignores the impact on our neighborhood of up to 180 people arriving at the same time and leaving at the same time. So I'd really like to understand what the decibel count is when it gets up to that number. In addition, the developer hasn't addressed the public concerns of running a hotel for around 60 people with no overnight staffing. What happens if there's a fire or another emergency? This is beyond an inconvenience to us if there's a disturbance. It's about our safety as well. I welcome the noise consultancy's most recent findings, which flag many of the concerns we've been raising for months now. As a unit owner on The View at Beacon Street, I'd like to add it would have been helpful for that report to have included evaluations from the perspective of both The View and Hammond Plaza. The proposed pathway through the cemetery runs parallel by just a few feet to our building and our land. While the outside deck and hotel will overlook our unit owners, all of this impacts us. If there are further audits, I'd ask that The View and Hammond Plaza are included in those. And I'd like to finish by inviting the planning board, on behalf of our concerned neighbors, to visit our complexes, The View, River Ridge View, Hammond Plaza, West End Lofts, and all the neighboring streets, to walk it with us and see just how closely we all abut this proposed development and the reality of the concerns that we have for our quality of life if this project goes ahead. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I mean, there's been a lot of comments tonight, and I think a consistent theme was we've been with you for some time, and that's what the secret process is for. It's designed to consider potential impacts and to try and work with an applicant to help mitigate those that might otherwise not have been identified. So the secret process is working exactly as designed, and the applicant has formally done a significant alternatives analysis to consider these impacts. We certainly appreciate the comments, and that's why we've worked with our noise consultants, our traffic consultants, and all those involved to try and further reduce this project to a size. There was a number of comments about all the construction that's taken place in the city, including these apartment buildings that now have surrounded the church that didn't exist when the church was on the site. There's a lot of development that takes place in this area. We're adaptively reusing a church and preserving it. There's no new construction, minimal construction to that facility. We're removing a parsonage building. The building will be slightly larger, but the site itself will effectively be developed like it has been for hundreds of years, with, of course, differences about what exactly is operating on the site, but a lot of similarities as well, but even reduced from what could be and what has taken place in the church historically. I know the applicant wants to mention a few things, but we are here, and we'd ask the board if there are, you know, if limiting further the hours to 8:00 and 9:00 accordingly from our schedule. We're trying to put these things into place to help the board have something more than the typical applicant would as far as enforcement. Mr. Clark has mentioned it. Some of the members of the public mentioned it, enforcement. We are creating a document that goes well beyond any other typical site plan approval or special permit even from conditions. We've created a management plan that can be taken to the building inspector by anyone that helps enforce this situation. That's on the applicant to self, of course, enforce, but, and the neighbors, I imagine, will be very closely monitoring it, so the applicant will have to be very vigilant over what's proposed. But what's proposed in the plans, what's proposed in the event management, and all the traffic studies that are included are to make sure that this site does disperse people from the site. Again, we've reduced the numbers and the total events that were having. We tried to reduce the number of days, and we're being told, how could we take away Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday? You should have those days. If I brought that back, you know, then it goes, now they have all these days. So we've had that back and forth because we're trying, and by removing these days and doing the things that we're doing, it's trying to be responsive to the public's comments. So if there is a specific set of criteria that the board thinks we should try and employ, that's what we've been doing. Our reductions have been attempting to manage those comments and questions to make it possible to use this space, because this is an existing church, and to do something viably in this space requires some level of operable capacity, and that is hours and numbers. So we hope that we can work with the board to get there, and this alternatives analysis is doing just what it's supposed to in the secret process, get it to a position where hopefully the board and the public can support it. While the not-in-my-backyard syndrome will always be there, we're trying to make it so that this project, through the special permit standards and limiting the hours and number of events and all of the above, makes it so that it fits squarely within the confines of the law. So I think Gavin had a quick statement, and then any questions we're pleased to address. And of course, we'll put in a supplemental submission addressing further the comments of the board, and our consultant will address the noise consultant's comments.
Thanks, Taylor. Sorry. Thank you for extending this, this long evening and listening to everybody. It's, I know it's a long process and a long night. I just, I just want to read this statement that I've prepared, and also, as Taylor suggested, you know, we have, the reasons why we would love to be able to do Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, we're just trying to, you know, not abide by what the concerns are and reduce these days, and that's one of the ways to be able to do that. So I just wanted to thank everybody for taking the time to fully evaluate our project. And we had initially presented a rather ambitious plan for a greater-capacity accessory event space in order to accommodate a limited number of events per year capable of hosting up to 500 guests. The idea behind these occasional larger events was that they could be used as a funding mechanism to support smaller, community-based arts initiatives. We were excited about the potential to host some bigger events. The community and press rallied around this aspect of the plan while also highlighting a few concerns. Some assumed that the intent here was to create a large concert venue. This idea was picked up by the media, the community, social media, and seemingly has controlled the narrative surrounding our proposed event space. Needless to say, we have spent a lot of time here talking about these large-capacity events and introducing mitigation strategies to accommodate. In an effort to address the concerns of our neighbors, we have now eliminated the potential for these larger events. We have since reduced our maximum capacity of the church building to 180 while permitting only 40 weekend days per year. That capacity can exceed 130 and end by 10:00 p.m. As an additional measure, we are prohibiting rock and DJ concerts from occurring after 9:00 p.m. As these types of events were never our objective, it's not really an issue to eliminate these rock and DJ concerts. So the majority of all the events we have anticipated will average about 100 to 130 guests, and with a significant portion of those attendees accommodated by and staying at the hotel. Our application is for a hotel with an accessory conference center and event space, and the existing church facility will be used for business meetings, cultural, educational, or professional programs, conferences, retreats, and seminars, and it will also have accommodations for eating. The church sanctuary will support a wide range of events. I know it's been unclear as to what these events are going to be, but this is the nature of having this event space conference center. It is not, there's not a target event here. And while I can tell you the main purpose is not music, I cannot say that we're going to have lectures every day. This is, so, this is what I'm talking about with that. So, the main objective of the event space is not that of a music venue, but to support a variety of arts and education-related conferences with programs and retreats. The city of Beacon takes pride in its forward-thinking politics and support for innovative ideas. I think we can all agree that our end goal is to bring sustainable development that benefits our city and its commerce while preserving or improving the quality of lives of our residents. We recognize art and culture as integral to our local economy and recreation. Many of us who live here are part of a larger community of professionals who work in creative fields or with art and educational institutions. I, myself, am one of those professionals that are in that field. Our mission, above all else, is to provide an environment that can support, facilitate, and nurture programs that help our community flourish. We see this as an opportunity for organizations to come together, whether it be for team-building retreats or to workshop a creative idea. It is our hope that through the fulfillment of this model, that the city of Beacon will benefit from and be enhanced by what this brings. And I would like to once again thank the members of the planning board for their time, consideration, and guidance as well in this process. So thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you. So, it's a lot here.
Board.
So, just kind of jotting my notes in terms of some of the things that, either through public comment, or through our planners' comments, or through our own review, until now, we should consider and deliberate on here. And I'll try to put them in what I think is a logical order, focused around specifically the issues, the concerns. Number one, traffic. We've spent a lot of time on traffic. Our own city's traffic consultant has finalized his review and left us with his notes relative to, at least, the traffic and the parking being, at this point, at, in his estimation, a satisfactory situation. But at the same time, I just wanted to chat amongst us about the idea of referring the traffic portion of this application to our Traffic Safety Committee. So we'll take that one on for the moment. Any thoughts? No, no, let's just go one by one. Let's talk about traffic.
To determine what exactly?
When I just asked whether we think it's appropriate and something we want to do to refer the traffic part of this application to our... That's a good question, so let's get to it. Let's talk about it. I'm not going to answer that. I want a discussion around the board. And so if we can't answer it, then it probably isn't necessary.
My concern is that, is the, you know, how to protect residences on, you know, side streets across from the, near the venue, from people parking, you know, two tires on their lawn, and the noise impacts of people coming back to their cars at, you know, 10:00 p.m. or 10:30 p.m. and slamming doors and talking excitedly. And I don't know, a long time ago, I asked the question, could we do resident parking permit? And the answer was that that can't be done without going to the state of New York, you know, going up to Albany. Like, what I was told was that the community can't incorporate a resident parking-only-type program where you give out, you know, stickers to people, you know, like they have, for example, in Pittsburgh, where if you can park in a certain neighborhood. So then, so is our only, our only option is then, like, do we do no parking? And then that is an impact on the residents who then can't have, you know, visitors park in front of their house?
It could be, it could be limited hour parking, so, so that's one of the things...
That could be something to refer to the Traffic Safety Committee. Would there be parking controls that they could envision that would mitigate impacts to nearby residents?
Exactly. That's a good point, and that's something then, therefore, I believe, the Traffic Safety Committee would bring to the council to consider as part of legislation, right? So that's one item. Anything else? I mean, I'm personally in support of the Traffic Safety Committee reviewing for those reasons and potentially making those recommendations to the city. I think that's pretty valid.
There was a public comment about instituting valet parking so that they could control... There was a public comment about instituting valet parking so that they could control where the cars go, even if they are on the public streets, and I think that would be something to consider, discuss.
Is that, applicant, is that a control currently in place, valet parking? I don't remember, I don't recall seeing that as a part of your management plan.
Right. It's not part of, it is not part of, we have the, we have the event management plan to structure how to get folks in and out of the site, but it doesn't currently incorporate valet.
So, but your management plan does speak to, to some degree, at certain size events, attendance, right? Not necessarily direct valet, but there are attendants, if I'm not mistaken, right?
What was the question? Sorry.
The question sprung from someone in the public referencing valet parking, which I understand from reading, you don't, you're not including that as part of your management plan.
No, it is not.
However, I'm observing that you do, based on certain events, certain size events, discuss the use of attendance.
What are the responsibilities?
Parking attendance, yes.
Right, yes. So, I'm not done. The question is, would you consider valet parking, and would valet parking, you know, materially affect the organization of things on your site from your perspective? And then I think we already understand through your management plan how the attendancy works in terms of the management of parking. So contrast that to valet parking.
So, I mean, I think what we've documented is that there's sufficient parking to handle the events in the surrounding area, but as far as the ability to do valet parking, really the question becomes, do we control spaces that are within a reasonable distance to allow for parking, valet parking to actually occur? So could we actually accommodate on our site? Probably not. And then where else could you do valet parking that would make it a viable solution?
So what I'm hearing you say is that the concept of valet parking as a management element is not something you see as being potentially effective?
I think it certainly would have its merits in this situation if it was, if there was a viable location for parking that we knew was going to be available at all times.
Well, so, you've said it, so let's go there. You've enumerated a number of viable locations that you're intending to use outside of your own lot.
Yeah, typically, yeah.
Twenty-five spaces that we know they can go right to that space rather than the multitude of locations available.
Right. And typically, when you have valet parking, it's a lot that is solely for that.
Across the street, the fire hose, the fire department lot. To me, I don't know, I used to be a valet when I was a kid. It was a lot of fun. And I could see the efficacy of an organized method of drop-off and assisting parking. Maybe, maybe not, I don't know.
I agree.
At least in distance across the street. Would it be, the question is, I'm not telling you, I'm not giving you the answer, I'm asking you.
We'll look into, I mean, we're open to all considerations to try and make this functionable.
I was also a valet parker, and I agree that it can come in handy in some situations. I don't, I don't see why we can't come up with a way to valet park with the parking available, but it's, that is, that is possible, we could work that out.
I think maybe just based on the fact that the question was raised, it could be an effective part of your management plan. I don't know, could you study it and get back to us?
Absolutely.
So then, we left it, at least in terms of the idea of referral to traffic safety committee, this idea of on-street parking. Any other thoughts on that? Or would someone like to make a motion to do just that, refer this to the traffic, traffic safety committee for a review for on-street parking?
Motion.
A motion by Karen.
Seconded.
Seconded by Len. And then again, this is specifically so it's captured, to study on-street parking. And, you know, I want to give them at least some parameters. I don't want to give them specific streets, but at least in the general vicinity of the application to where on-street parking might occur during large events. I don't know if that's too broad.
We could say within the quarter-mile radius that they have on the map in their application.
It's fair, seems sufficient. Within a quarter-mile radius then, of the application. Right in the center of the applicant's lot.
Yeah.
So, all in favor? Seconded by, sorry, it was Len. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then, as far as the applicant's stated controls in terms of, I just want to get a sense of how comfortable the board is, or whether we need more, on the hours of operation limits, the size of function limits that the applicants stated for us and, through doing so, agrees to, should this go through, abide by. Does the board feel like they need any more discussion questions, or have any further asks? One thing I can raise is, it came up earlier this evening, this idea of a limit to times for access through the cemetery. Any thoughts on that?
I have a broader question for the board. Is there some, you know, time where if all events were completed and all guests had left by, say, 9:00 p.m., would that have some significant impact on, you know, on the assessment of controlling the impacts? So, you know, is there, is there a time such that, and Taylor Palmer, you asked us, you know, is there something that is, you know, significant? I don't know if there is, but if, but for example, if somebody said, well, what if all events ended by 8:30 and all guests, everything was shut down by 9:00 p.m.?
Roughly the same question. I want to, I want to come at it from what the applicant has stated as their self-imposed limits, which will then become requirements. Basically the same question, Len. Is the board satisfied, or are there other conditions or other limits you'd like to consider discussing with the applicant?
I think as it stands now, for the special use permit, it seems to be, both the hours and the number of people seem to be impacting the surrounding use in a way that doesn't meet the standards in the special use.
So from the perspective of what, noise? And we'll get to noise in a second, because I think we still have some work to do on noise, especially as it relates to our review of SECR, so I don't know if that's where you were going, but I'm just talking specifically about...
Well, there's an intensity of use that it seems to resolve around. A, it's controlling where the parking happens, it's the noise, and it's the quantity of people at, you know, at a given, at concentrated, in-concentrated times.
Yeah, so what you're saying is, is it comes down to still ultimately the potential for a noise issue?
Yes.
Yes. And therefore...
Noise and traffic.
Okay, so let's just...
Controlling, like controlling the traffic, because if it were a venue where they, I understand that there are legal, you know, legal loopholes that they can, you know, take advantage of, but nonetheless, as someone said earlier this evening, there are still, you know, the 100-plus cars that need to be dealt with. And if it were, you know, if there were more control over where those cars are going, I think that would be helpful to the neighborhood.
Let's stick with noise for a sec. So we heard in detail from the applicant's consultant, his response to the city's consultant's review of his first report. And therefore, in my view, I would like, and perhaps the board would agree, our city's consultant to respond to the applicant's acoustical consultant's comments here, and then, which will be formal response to his notes in turn. So we still have that yet to review and understand, right?
There were also holes in the analysis, like, you know, the groups of people out by 9D, and also the impact on the other neighbors rather, other than just the north and the south.
Right. Just to be very clear, the applicant has to meet the noise ordinance. So all of this is well-intentioned and designed to mitigate against, but the applicant's project and the report is indicating that we are going to meet those criteria. So don't, I just want to make sure. There was also mention of 100 cars, that's not the number of vehicles coming to the site. I'm not going to go to the traffic study for that, but...
We get it, because we've been through this 100 times with other applications as far as the law of the noise ordinance.
Right.
And the ability for acousticians to study theoretical models of noise generated on site, right? So your applicant has done that, our, excuse me, your acoustician has done that, our acoustician has said, there's some things about your reporting that we find a little...
Mm-hmm.
And then your applicant said, I read those things that your consultant said were a little off, and he responded to them here verbally tonight. What I'm saying is, I would simply like for our consultant to review what your consultant said tonight.
Yes.
And respond in kind, right?
Right.
That's all I'm saying. So that will give us the ability to further understand from a professional, because none of us are acousticians. Actually, I know more about acoustics than I ever want to know, because it makes my brain hurt, but we'll leave it to the professionals at this point to share back, in this instance, our consultant, his thoughts on your consultant's most recent comments.
I think Karen's question suggests that the board might need a little more clarity on the applicant's acoustician's decision that, once you get into the 9D corridor, you're now in the New York State DOT-controlled zone, and I think he said that their standard was like 67 decibels for street traffic.
I think that's if you run a DOT, yeah, we can address that in our comments.
So we may need our own also decision about whether we agree with that interpretation, that that's the controlling standard in that corridor.
Yes, that's exactly what I'm saying. The things that your consultant raised here tonight, I'd like our consultant to respond to, which is exactly what Len just said.
Right.
Again, so thank you. Yes. So there's that. So as far as noise, and so therefore SECR, I'm of the position that we wait for our consultant's notes back on what we just heard tonight from the applicant's consultant. Are we all in agreement there?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
We need to hear our consultant's comments on whether the fences that are proposed are going to be, yeah, exactly. Agreed, just agreeing with you.
And just as I made, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, previous comments from adjoining property owners in prior iterations first said, suggested that 10 o'clock be a more reasonable limit. We're hearing now that line has shifted to an earlier hour. Is that something that the board believed, meaning moving it, moving it back to the 8 and 9 o'clock hours to try and, because those are considered daytime, 9 o'clock is, before 9 o'clock is a daytime hour.
Right.
For all intents and purposes, that's the code, and that's what we're, and that is further addressing public comments, and all issues that are being presented relate to the distribution or dispersment of patrons from this site.
Thank you for restating my question to my board.
Oh, all right. Well, we didn't get an answer on the hours, but I'll push it off.
That's my point, we haven't...
All right, we'll wait for the comments.
Is there a magic hour?
We're waiting.
That's the question.
Talk amongst yourselves.
Yeah, is there a, I'll ask that question. Is there a magic hours?
It seems that the community favors the daytime hours and events that would, that would coincide with your description of a conference center.
Evening, yeah.
So, you know, morning.
Everything finished by 9:00 p.m. might be a...
I think nine might be pushing it.
Well, and the only reason I'm, the reason, only reason I'm mentioning nine is I think that's in the noise law when we switch over to nighttime hour noise ordinances, so there's some, because we would, like, the question is, what do you, it'd be nice to have some kind of precedent to hang your hat on, right? If you're going to pick an hour, if it's somehow tied into an ordinance we have, or it has some context, then it's easy, then it's not arbitrary and capricious, right? So...
We're, we would, that's, we're trying to self-impose those in accordance with what the considerations are, and if it's dispersing folks from the property specific for those limited days, not every day of the year, not 365, but the days that we've limited, and the numbers that we've limited, and how many days they're already limited, we're further limiting those hours if that would be, you know...
So would that be dispersed by 9 o'clock?
That's what I'm asking the board to think about. And I'm also asking whether that's more important than which days, you know, and so like, if, like, for instance, if it was agreed that, you know, all patrons or conference attenders were dispersed by 9:00 p.m., that, you know, you would need to sacrifice Mondays through Wednesdays, that kind of thing? You know, is it, what's more important? Where's the emphasis? And the emphasis on people can be assured that they can, you know, get a good night's sleep and come home from work, and by 9:00 p.m., there's nothing to disturb their, you know, rest? You know, is that more important than what days things are happening on?
So are we proposing anything to the applicant?
I think I heard it.
So far, I feel like it's like unilaterally me musing and not, not hearing a lot of, you know, lively dialogue from the rest of the board.
Smersman by 9 o'clock is what I heard, meaning the event would have to end before that time to have people off-site by 9 o'clock, regardless of the event effectively.
And is that, is that something that fits the business model that's being considered?
The applicant's here, and we're going to have to look at that, but if that's going to make the board in a position and the public supporting where we're going, we're listening.
So which day specifically are you talking about, then? Dispersed, we're talking about dispersed by 9, right?
On a day.
So applicant makes a valid point. Events would need to end prior to that.
Right, like by 8:30, you know, or whatever, you know, something along that, in that kind of vicinity.
I think, I think that's reasonable potentially for weekday events. I think there should be a different standard for weekend events.
The noise standard doesn't, the noise ordinance doesn't make a difference for weekdays versus weekends, does it?
No.
It's, no, no, because, yes, we've already established that they have to follow the noise ordinance, they have to follow the law. This is more about, honestly, what it comes down to is perception and courtesy to neighbors, right? So...
And character of the neighborhood and the uses that are appropriate to, you know...
I'm not clear on what it is we're trying to settle. Are we advising the applicant on their business model?
No.
Or are we...
The question is, do we feel, based on everything we've learned, understand, know, heard about this application, and I think, quite importantly, from the vast majority of this application's neighbors, do we feel that the restrictions that the applicant has imposed on themselves in terms of hours of operation are sufficient? Or would we rather see them, based on all of those factors, more restrictive? And so we're talking about potentially moving from a done by 9, dispersed by 9:45, to a done by an earlier hour and dispersed by an earlier hour. And the last hour we just discussed, for the last three hours now, was 8:30? Did I hear that right? I don't know.
Well, they're allowing, I would say 8 o'clock, because they're allowing 45 minutes of dispersal. And I think that we should consider, if we're thinking of opening it up to the Monday through Wednes, you know, Monday through Wednesday being more business hours, you know?
Right, that would make sense.
Or a very limited evening, you know, with, I don't know, off the top of my head, 30 to 50 people, you know, type of weeknight. But I would, I would say business hours during the week, and, you know, on the weekend, people dispersed by 9.
And see, you know, the challenge of this is, in an ideal world, we would mitigate all... is, in an ideal world, we would mitigate all the adverse impacts, right, to everyone's satisfaction. But, but the problem is, is I get uncomfortable with us trying to kind of brainstorm what these events look like and what the hours, you know, look like. If you wanted to delve into this for a second, like, you have a professional conference, you might have talks from 8 to 5, and then some kind of little reception from 5 to 6, little 7.
All you have to do is imagine yourself living next to this, and consider what might be reasonable to you. I think that's what we should put our, put our mindset.
I live across the street from St. Luke's Church. It has a Montessori school, it used to have people come and use the basketball gym, there was the occasional wedding, and so, what is, you know, it certainly wasn't unusual to have an event going on until 8:00 PM, like the basketball game after school hours with people coming and using the activity building, right? So, I mean, if you're just asking me, as a resident of Beacon for 26 years, what's, you know, what's your, what's reasonable, I think something ending between 8:00 and 9:00 PM is reasonable.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm just, that's mine.
Thank you.
Two bits.
Any between 8:00 and 9:00 PM every day, or during the week and something different on the weekends?
You know, and people, it, I, like I said, I feel like we're getting out of our, getting out of our bailiwick here.
So, so then, so then, I just posed the question, if you're, if you're not comfortable, then what I'm hearing is, is that what the applicant has stated, you aren't comfortable with.
I'm comfortable with, I'm, I'm comfortable with an ending time of 9:00, and that's weekends too, okay? That's if you're asking me.
Okay.
Because I'm trying to put myself in the shoes of residents, saying, "Hey, this is predominantly a residential neighborhood. This church is right next to, it joins my property, my townhome, my apartment."
Other, other thoughts on anyone?
John, can I just put this into con- this discussion into context a little bit with respect to our procedures?
Yes, please.
So, this is a relevant discussion for two reasons. One, for secret purposes, for determining whether there may be an adverse, significant adverse environmental impact, or whether, as proposed, or as the applicant is offering to change the project, there will not be any significant adverse environmental impacts. The second relevant point is the special use permit standards. Ultimately, that's what this application is all about. If the applicant meets each of the special use permit standards, then the applicant, application must be granted. Those special use permit standards, we talked about it at prior meetings, they're in your code, we've distributed them at prior meetings. The two that are relevant for this discussion on noise and other, you know, intensity of use, um, issues are that the operations in connection with the special use will not be more objectionable to nearby properties by reason of noise than, um, than would be the operations of any permitted use in this district. And the second one dealing with, with noise is that the proposed use is compatible with the neighborhood. So, I think those are the, sort of the, the key language pieces from the standards to think about as you're talking about this.
Thanks, I appreciate that, it's helpful.
Just to backtrack for a moment, you know, the traffic and the intensity is like, you know, it's just out of character with what's happening in the immediate surroundings, so that's the issue that I'm trying to address.
Right, and I would, I would deflect that back.
As well as the hours and the noise.
And well, we certainly respect that comment, and also, it has, just to address it, it is a existing church that can have up to 350 people there today, so that is not a, the existing conditions is, we've, I know we've talked about this before, but the existing conditions can be more impactful than the proposed use, that is fully constrained and limited and reduced hours, so it's not a every-day, all-day affair, it is quite limited as compared to what the existing conditions are on the site.
Did you state a day when there's been 350 people in that church for the last 15, 20 years?
We've been working in only the most, you, the board itself has said, "We need to look at this, John, that's not," I know you're making that point, but we've made the same point, and if you don't accept our point about how this is not every day, you can't make the same point to say, "Well, what's going on there today?" Because the Church of Jennifer Gray is coming, and it's going to be every day, and it's going to be 350 people, because we want to follow what Jennifer does. Sorry.
If that was the case, you wouldn't be here.
Yeah, this would have already been done.
Chairman, given the hour, and we have another public hearing, we're starting on night number one.
Yeah, I'd like to get rolling here.
Yeah, do we want to, um, maybe, obviously, the public hearing is going to be continued, right? Because we still have to hear from your noise consultant, in addition to responses from, from their noise consultant, as well as other things. But maybe we tee this up for next month to have a discussion about the secret issues, right? And also, maybe go point by point through the special use permit standards, to have sort of an organized discussion about each, each thing.
I think that's a great idea. I was trying to make it organized.
You were.
But it wasn't working.
Motion.
Appreciate that. Motion to what, make it organized?
Yes.
So, we have more work to do next month.
We do, and we appreciate the comments, we know we're, we are, this is, this is seeker, working the way it's supposed to, and we're trying to get there, and I think with those limits.
It's not often, but I agree with you. I certainly, I do agree with you on that.
It must be that haircut.
And look, it's, it's painful. It's painful because we want to be very deliberate, we want to be very thorough, we want to be very understanding of all of the factors, and, you know, look, in this instance, this particular application, as you've seen, has engendered some real concerns by your neighbors, so we have to obviously take that into consideration too. Thanks. With that quick break, you know me too well.
So, just for the record, the public hearing will be adjourned to the planning board's March meeting, correct?
That's correct. Oh wow, look who's there. Okay, we're going to keep going here, um, with dispatch, this next item on the agenda is a public hearing on an application for subdivision approval, 12 Highland Place, submitted by Lori Joseph Builders.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Oh, excuse me, I'm gonna, um, thank you, I'm going to request a motion to open the public hearing, uh, for subdivision approval. Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Karen, second by Jill, all in favor? Aye. Evening.
Good evening. Uh, for the record, Taylor Palmer with Cuddy &amp; Fader, on behalf of the applicant, Lori Joseph Builders, uh, the owners of the property. I'm joined by Mike Bodendorf of Hudson Land Design, as well as the applicant, Gary Joseph. As the chairman stated, and thank you for opening the public hearing, we are before you in connection with a proposal for a five-lot subdivision at 12 Highland Place. As the board is aware, at our January 10th meeting, the board did close, uh, the seeker public hearing and adopted a NECD for the five-lot subdivision. Following the public comments and feedback from the board, while we believe that five-lots satisfies your zoning requirements and the subdivision regulations, uh, we are pleased to share an audible, and if I may, mix my metaphors, for. Now, by that I mean, we're pleased to share with the board that in response to the comments from the public and the board, um, and of course, your consultants, we have actually reduced the project down to four total lots, from five. Um, so we have reduced the project down to four lots in the proposed subdivision. Mike, I'm going to have walk-through. This hasn't been submitted to your board, so bear with us, but we wanted to sort of highlight that right out of the gate with respect to the adjustments. Lots 1 and 2 have been combined, I know what Mike's doing over there, this guy could be their noise consult, resulting in four lots that range in size from .24 acres to .31 acres. So, that makes the lots generally larger than all of the referenced smaller lots that have been provided in public comments that are in the area, so we're generally larger than any of the considered smallest lots in the area. The revised layout includes two lots fronting on Highland and two behind, fronting on Anderson effectively. Again, consistent with our prior proposal, all of the lots gain access, um, from Highland via shared driveway. So, um, again, we realize you haven't seen this reduction, and I'm going to have Mike bring his computer up here and walk you through it, um, but of course, we'd respectfully submit that this would further reduce any potential environmental impacts. Again, you've already adopted a seeker determination on five lots, um, and-
So, just procedurally, I'm sorry, would we have to go then back and modify our SECR determination for this reduction?
I think that it would be appropriate to do an amended NECD. Obviously, the impacts are going to be less.
Right.
But I think just for the record.
For the record.
To make sure that it's documented, um, you know, because this is being presented for the first time tonight, um, I would recommend that we, we keep this public hearing open for the next meeting.
Yeah, of course, okay. Thank you. Alright.
And Mike's pushing me off the stage, so I appreciate that, because we've all been here a while.
Yeah, keep, keep pushing, push hard.
So, the last comment, you know, because we're paid by the word, is, of course, it does come with the reduced impervious services, but Mike will touch on the reductions there.
Good evening. For the record, Mike Bodendorf, Hudson Land Design, engineer for the applicant. Um, so we are looking at a four-lot layout here. Generally, lots 1 and 2, previous lots 1 and 2, which I'll switch back to the old layout here, have been consolidated into one lot. Those previous lots fronted on Grove Street, um, now Lot 1, which is this lot, will front on Highland Place. Lot 2, which used to be Lot 3, there really have been no changes there, other than the fact that, actually, there's no changes whatsoever on that lot. Lot 3, what used to be Lot 4, no changes. Lot 4, what used to be Lot 5, no changes. Um, we will have a single driveway for new Lot 1. Um, we've kept the same amount of proposed plantings, we haven't reduced any of them, the same amount of drainage mitigation, um, and these trees were previously proposed for the Lot 1 driveway and Lot 2 driveway, and what we did was move them back to where the driveway will have the parking area, and this will provide a little bit of screening between the two lots here. That's generally in a nutshell, um, we did reduce the impervious from the previous layout by just shy of about 2,000 square feet.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
When, when, when can we get that to look at more closely?
Sorry?
Oh yeah, we'll be submitting this.
So, sometime this week? What's today?
If, we could, it's ready to submit now, we can submit at any time.
Never seen you so eager, Jill. Great. So, imminent.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
On Lot 1, is there a garage, or is it, like, what's happening with the driveway?
There's, there's no garage shown now, there would be an option for a garage, because we, we could fit it within the setbacks.
And when you say that Lot 1 fronts on Highland, uh, there's a, there's a driveway that goes directly, I mean, is the house oriented then towards Highland?
Yeah, the front door is oriented towards Highland.
And there's a walkway that goes from the street to the front door?
Yeah, and what I did with this lot is I just lined it up with Lot 4, which used to be Lot 5, to just kind of keep the frontage in the same plane.
So, okay, I think you've mercifully made at least a review of application number two at 10:15 at night that much quicker. So, to Jill's point, we will potentially take comments from the public as a part of this, tonight's public hearing, but, um, other than that, um, doing what we need to do to amend the SECR and continuing our review of your new, um, planning next month, not much else we can do. Right?
Understood.
I love it when I say stuff in the attorney.
I'll leave that discussion to Taylor.
Yeah, well, he is nodding, so we're done.
The only thing we might ask on top of that, which may be where Jennifer was going to go, is if the board would see fit considering authorizing its attorney to draft.
Yeah. Yep. We will discuss that.
I think we should hear from the public.
Yeah, I was going to go to the public, thank you. So, anyone here from the public who would like to, yes, please? Three minutes, thank you.
Clark, I'm in 2 Wilson. So, we went from three, let's just say, $750,000 houses, just to throw a number out, um, and two $600,000 houses on smaller lots, presumably smaller, and so, effectively, the community has bullied all property owner into building more expensive houses. And I think it's worth noting, the, the essence in, um, property ownership and compliant zoning, and this trend towards bullying property owners that are fully compliant, is not a good look if you match it to what has been expressed by the council, in terms of encouraging property ownership and more affordable opportunities for the citizens of the community. I, I have no particular objection to what the developer did, I have no objection to his original plan, but what I do have is just, I would like to take a moment to make the observation that the elimination of two smaller lots for one bigger lot in bigger house is not exactly consistent with much of what the council has expressed over the last term. And I, I'd like to just bring that to your attention, in all due respect, because it's quite evident, logic prevails that smaller lots and smaller houses are more affordable and more accessible to more people than bigger houses on bigger lots. The developer is going to make the same amount of money, I, I presume, and I have a certain level of skill about that topic. So, it's really not off, you know, it's not out of his pocket, he's moving his project forward, but at the expense of limiting, you know, a, a more affordable, two more affordable houses that are probably about $150,000 more affordable to families. So, it'd be relatively inconsistent with the, uh, the interest of the council, in my opinion, but he's certainly welcome to do it.
Thank you. Just for the record, the board does not engage in any form of bullying.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, you've been very patient and, and, uh, working very hard tonight. Um, I had, last month, I had sent you a, an email with my comments for the subdivision, because I couldn't be here, not knowing that it wasn't coming up for the subdivision last month, it was just a seeker, but right now, I think that Mr. Joseph should have requested a adjournment until everybody had seen this new plan. But my one thing I still wanted to point out is that, um, it, this is a new subdivision, and we're a city, and I don't think that you should be approving private driveways on a new subdivision. I think it should be a city street, even though it would be a, a very short street. We have Louisa Street, we have Odell Street up by us, which are short streets, and that way, there wouldn't be any easements for access or utilities, they would be in the public road, which is a big thing, because easements will always be a problem. I mean, uh, the people will buy the house and then not realize later that what the easement really meant. The other thing I had is now it's Lot 4 instead of Lot 5. Um, I know Mr. Joseph had done a, a survey of, you know, how, uh, deep it was before you hit rock, and on that one, I think it was only two inches? I think that's what, but my concern is, what will the footprint of the house look like? Because from my property over here, there's a very large, large outcropping of rock that's above the level of the land. So, I don't know where he was measuring, because there is a lot of rock there, and I think he's going to have to do a lot of drilling to put a house there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Paul Lyons, 7 Highland Place. I, I agree that, I, I would think that we should have known about this change prior to today's meeting. I'm sure they knew about it. I really don't know what to say, because this changes everything, all the points I actually had. My concern is what this construction is going to do to our neighborhood as far as dust and banging and drilling. I'm actually sitting here stunned, because I, this changes everything. I understand what you said, you, you're getting a headache. Well, when I leave here, I'm going to have a headache. I can't turn my brain off when I live here, so I will not get any sleep, probably. But my, my one- Like I said, again, I don't know what this does now. I think we should have had more time to rationalize what just happened.
Suffice it to say, we will hold the public hearing over, because we only just saw this for the first time tonight. So there will still be continued review and ample time for the public to come back after their own review to add your additional comments, should you so wish.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Teresa Kraft. I just want to say, I'm looking at the blueprints that's in tonight's packet and comparing it to that. Unlike the previous speaker, the house dimensions did not change. So it's four of the same sized houses that were in the original plan. The fifth house is gone. And I know a lot of people want to just subdivide every piece of parcel in town, and some people want to put 20 houses on their little strip of land. I'm still opposed to this developer's plan to change the quality of life for the residents. Just because the developer can do it, does not mean they should. Both the Planning Board Chair and the City Engineer immediately voiced concerns about the shared driveway since the beginning of the subdivision. As residents, we are watching public fire and rescue efforts front and center in our city as a major concern. Landlocking a small clustered private enclave of multiple family residents and rescue services into a tight quarter is a disaster waiting to happen. Our code clearly states, 195-20 Minimum Requirements General Standards, A, the Planning Board in considering an application for the subdivision of land shall be guided by the following considerations and standards, which standards shall be deemed to be the minimum requirements for the convenience, health, safety, and welfare of the city. Choosing to allow this plan to proceed, now with four lots, will still destroy the neighborhood in a way we've never seen in our city, and will immediately set a precedent in all future build-outs in other neighborhoods around the city. It will make it difficult for this board and all future planning boards to reject proposals that reduce safety and quality of life in favor of the developers' profits. Residents of Beacon are relying on this planning board and its paid consultants, experts, to guide the city into smart growth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jody McCready, Ohio Land. I'll be quick. I know you guys have a long night. Thank you all very, very much. Like everyone else, I'm very surprised. It's definitely a step in the right direction. I do appreciate it. A lot of the issues still exist that I had asked you guys about, but the main thing that I want to point out is the issue of parking, which came up last time. And I know that the Traffic and Safety Committee was going to look at parking on Highland. This has the same issues with emergency vehicles having to turn to go down long driveways to get to the place, to get to the homes. And that is what created the issue with parking. The issue with parking was turning radius. If I have a fire at my house, the fire engine pulls up right in front of my house and doesn't need to turn anywhere. There's ample space. So to say we're going to take away half the parking for the turning radius, that is a loss of parking that is specifically because of this project, whether it's five lots or four lots, that's still the same issue. And if you look around our neighborhood, Anderson, Grove, Spruce, Tillot, all of those streets, all streets all over Beacon are just as narrow as ours and have parking on both sides of the street, and they don't have an issue. And that's because the turning radius of emergency vehicles isn't an issue. And if you look at the, I don't know what lot it is now, but the lot all the way in the back, if an ambulance has to get there, how's it getting out? There's no room to turn around. Is an ambulance going to have to back down that curve and then around the driveway? You know, I just don't understand how that's going to work, and it just doesn't seem safe to me at all. So I hope that that's something that you continue to consider, and thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you. Just curious, consultants, for those items that are, oh, I'm sorry. Please.
Hey, I just wanted to kind of echo, I get that this, why this happened. I'll also echo Jody that I think, like, this is a step in the right direction. I do feel like this could have been done sooner. I know this has been expressed, this is like beating it over the head, but I feel like I need to say it again. Like, you're all here late. We're all here late. I've got, like, two kids that skipped out, I'll have to be here tonight. And I didn't need to be here, essentially, for this tonight, and I could have, like, I wrote a response to what was there before. So like, I do think, like, in the sense of fairness, give us a heads up, so that we can do this together, because this really felt like railroading, to essentially come and be prepared to speak to a previous state and then say, oh, actually, we've got the latest greatest. I think that that was known and intentional, and I think that we could work better on this in the future. Thanks.
Sure. Look, stuff happens. We know this is new. But again, just for everybody and for the record, we're going to hold the public hearing over. We're going to continue our review on this new form of application for this location. And there'll still be ample time to share your insights and comments as well. I just will say that, you know, just as far as reminding the board of the memorandum we received, and again, I'm just sort of doing this with a filter of what still germain, most of it is, I believe, the Traffic Safety Committee, sorry, Traffic and Safety Planning Committee, has shared their observations with us. If you remember, we referred this to them. And I'll just highlight some other bullet points, both for the public and to remind the board. The committee issues the following findings. The proposal is in compliance with city code requirements for required roadway width. And the committee found that widening of the road for the proposal beyond such is not necessary. I would imagine that is still applicable with this reduced application. Number two, the proposal has adequate emergency vehicle access. Fire Chief Van Forehys explained to the committee that the city's fire department apparatus, says apparatuses, will access through the middle driveway, from which the department would then access any of the adjoining properties without issue. I would imagine, to some degree, that's still germane. Correct me if I'm wrong, anyone. There is currently no parking permitted opposite this driving, and therefore, the committee is satisfied that fire department vehicles will have adequate turn radius and ability to access all homes in the proposal. Committee has no concern about the proposal to limit parking on the west side of Highland Place. The committee's police representative expressed that the west side is used infrequently for parking currently. The committee also noted that restricting parking along one of a street, one side of a street, I'm assuming they meant to say, is a common occurrence throughout the city more generally. The committee also found adequate parking allocations for each of the properties in the proposal. The committee discussed pedestrian safety and possible improvements. At length, the committee declines to recommend that the planning board require the developer to install sidewalks along either Highland Place or Grove Street, due to practical space constraints and considering that adjacent streets lack sidewalks to connect with. So I thought it would be good to share that out.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
I'm confused by something that you just read, because I think what you said was that, I just want to make sure I understood this correctly, that the letter from the committee said that, is their understanding that there's currently a prohibition on parking across Highland Place from the existing driveway?
That's what it says.
Okay, so that's one, so.
No, I don't think.
Yeah, there is no restrictions, there's no current restrictions on parking.
Okay, so that's an erroneous statement.
I think what they were implying is that there's a driveway where cars park and back out directly across from the middle driveway. And so, so nobody would be parking there in the street.
Okay.
Because they'd be blocking the driveway.
I mean, it's, it sounds a little bit pragmatic, a little bit speculative.
But it's an existing condition that it's referring.
If you look at the graphic on the screen.
Yep.
It just shows that the driveway parking area directly across.
Right. Looks like, yeah, looks like some cars parked on grass. I'm looking at Google Maps.
Correct.
And so the second part of their statement is that, they're saying that, but they would support a prohibition on parking on the west side?
The committee has no concern about the proposal to limit parking on the west side of Highland Place.
Yeah, so I asked Ben Swanson, who drafted this memo on behalf of the committee this morning, for further clarification on that. He said that it was the committee's understanding that the proposal was to restrict parking on the west side, that that was what was being requested. So they were responding that they have no objection to that, if that's what's going to happen. But not that they were affirmatively recommending.
Was that the charge to them, or?
No. No. It was for them to consider, because we had discussed it potentially, but then again, it was predicated, it was predicated on the concern about fire equipment apparatus access. And therefore, just reading what their conversation with Chief Van Forehys is, there is no concern about.
Yeah, and the other thing I think is relevant also is, in speaking with the building inspector, I understand that the fire code says that if the driveway is, I think it's, and Bruce, correct me if I'm wrong, it's 300 feet or less, that there's adequate fire access, and the truck, even if it couldn't get into the driveway.
Doesn't need to turn.
And then fight the fire from.
So you are correct.
Yeah, you could speak much more clearly.
The front door is less than 300 feet from the public road. In the driveway issue, there's no requirement to have fire department access go in the driveway.
I understand.
I've talked to the chief about this, and he has no concerns. He feels that it's acceptable, you know, as this project proposed, so.
So the reason, and the reason I'm asking this question is then, is it my understanding then that there's no need to take away existing street parking?
Yes. That's my reading of this.
And by the way, we're not, we're not objecting to that. I think what was highlighted was simply that an existing condition, regardless of this project existed, the project is not driving this change. It was an existing condition.
I wasn't suggesting that you were, I just want, so.
It rises to the level of this. There was concern expressed about fire equipment access.
Right.
And the current condition is that there is parking allowed on both sides of the street.
And that can continue?
To my understanding, there is no risk to any life safety or fire apparatus access by maintaining parking on both sides of the street. And there is no either requirement, we wouldn't put this on the applicant anyway, for them to restrict parking on one side of the street, nor, to my thinking, is there any reason, doesn't rise to the level of concern enough for the planning board to recommend to the city that they consider. And, you know, you can even see through the Traffic and Safety Committees, they have no concern about the proposal limited, but they're not emphasizing that we should as a city limited, so.
Thanks for clarifying. The reason I asked was because I got the sense from some of the public comments that residents were saying, you know, that they felt their hardship was being imposed on them, that parking was going to be eliminated, that they used. So that's not the case. So thanks.
It's a 21-foot street. If two cars park on both sides of the pavement, you don't have access through the middle. Car can squeak through, it's fire, truck can't. So my guess is, people pull onto the grass, so that they don't block the street. And that's the way it's sort of done in Beacon. And parking is informal. Generally, people don't try to park across the street from somebody else, they provide gaps. That's the way it works. If indeed it is a problem with people parking on the pavement, you're taking up 14 feet of a 21-foot street. That's not enough for a fire truck to go through.
But here again, the committee's.
But that's not generally the way it works in Beacon, because all the streets are narrow. People pull onto the grass a little bit, and they don't park side by side, perpendicular to each other.
You also, in a neighborhood like this, you pretty much know the knucklehead who's parking right on the street, and you go either knock on their door and say, you're blocking the road. But anyway.
If they're home.
If they're home. The committee's police, or they're coming to visit you. The committee's police representative expressed that the west side is used infrequently for parking currently.
Can we hear from one of the current residents to the street?
Sure.
There'll be less opportunity with three new driveways to park on the west side.
Exactly.
Or two new driveways.
You can't, you can't block the driveway with the parking, so.
So just two things. Yeah, nobody parks on the west side of the street now, because nobody lives on the west side of the street now. But if you add four more houses, people are going to be parking there, because then you're going to have a lot of people that aren't going to be able to park. And again, it's really hard to get in and out of those driveways. But I sent you all an email from the, I haven't seen this memorandum, I guess it was from this morning, I haven't looked at that yet, but I sent you all an email from the fire chief back in November, where he said that the way to get access would be to eliminate parking. So that's directly an email that I received from the fire chief. Granted, that was when we had the private road plan. I don't know if it's different now because of the shared driveways, although it seems like the houses are still set just as far back from the road, and I don't know why. And again, it's not just fire engines, it's an ambulance, too. An ambulance would need to pull up to the house. So it would also be an ambulance that would need to get in there. Sorry, thank you.
And just a couple, and well, great points. We're not, we're, there's an existing driveway there today. You won't park in front of that driveway now. That's consistent with where we're locating that, the new entrance. So that's, that's not a changed condition either. So you're still not going to park in front of that driveway. That's pretty much the same. But we're also providing the zoning compliant off-street parking, so.
Right. So honestly, not to be cheeky, but this whole idea or issue of restricting parking is not your concern.
No.
And at a certain point, I think we'll all come to the realization that it's not a concern of ours either at the moment.
Doesn't sound like he was even asking for it.
Right.
So, let's put that to bed.
Well, to be fair, it is something that we could recommend to the Traffic Safety Committee if we felt it was warranted.
But I think we're.
But we reviewed it in Traffic Safety and.
Do you feel, yes.
Yeah.
You make a good point. But do we feel it's warranted? I don't think we do. Do you?
No.
No? No?
I'm not hearing you. No, sir.
What? I don't think it's.
No.
No.
It's a concern.
Done. Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
Could you put up the prior slide that has the new subdivision proposal?
Which, which one?
The four lot. The one that didn't have a satellite view. All right. What is before?
Can we zoom in?
Yeah, it would be good if you could zoom in. I don't know who has control over this.
He'll have one right next to you. If that helps.
So you have. So now what we've got, we've, how does?
One driveway, shared driveway, and a third driveway.
Can I make a suggestion?
Absolutely.
And this is in the interests of moving this along. Can we spend the next month reviewing this?
Yeah.
And then come back to the next month's meeting and be all prepared with any new questions?
No, that's all good. I can see this better now that it's closer to me, and that is answering the questions I was going to ask.
Oh, good.
So, all right. Let's do that exactly.
Awesome.
Only may I ask that you might consider directing at least a draft of a resolution to be considered, assuming we've addressed comments that may, I think we've addressed many of them tonight.
Yeah, look, this is reducing, this is reducing, right?
It's reducing everything.
So we've got the SECR, we got an administratively update. We can do that next month. And I'm willing to entertain a motion to authorize draft. Thoughts around the board?
I think that might be premature, because council recommended, if I understood correctly, that we should reopen SECR, since it's a new plan?
Not necessar, well, just that you would need to amend your negative declaration to account for the reduction.
But I'm sorry, that we should reopen the public comment.
Continue the public.
Not just that you would, you would want to hear from the public tonight and keep the public hearing open to the next meeting to allow people to review the subdivision and make comments on it.
We don't need to go all the way back to SECR public hearing for this.
No, but what she said, we have to keep it open.
We have to keep this here.
Subdivision public hearing.
The subdivision public hearing open.
Oh, I see.
Because we're getting brand-new information in real time.
Which we're going to do.
And if there were more comments, they could be incorporated. It's not to say that that's, that's just a working draft of the.
So exactly. I'm in favor of, because it moves things along, it doesn't pressure us to adopt it, it just gets it ready, because the sense is that we're close enough.
I agree.
So, motion by Karen.
Motion.
Second.
Seconded.
Second by Len. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. And then Jennifer, I guess for the record, the hearing will be considered?
Yeah, thank you for, yeah.
Yes, for the record, the hearing will be held over.
Taylor's trying to move things along.
Until next month. Thank you.
So the public hearing is adjourned to, to March? Yeah.
Am I supposed to say it that way?
I'm sorry.
Held over, adjourned, isn't it the same thing?
I didn't hear what you had said.
Okay. Okay, we're moving on to item number three, which is continued review of concept plan for hiplofs.[1788.28] Ari, I'm assuming you don't do this unintentionally? Why did some of your doc, documents come up totally redacted?
It's been a secret area.
I think it's because you're running out, I think it's because you're running out of storage on your device. Yeah, that's why. These, these files are really, a lot of times are really, really high data files and all.
It's a PDF for crying out loud. But, all right, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Ari Seagull, representing the owner. So we submitted revised drawings in response to the comments we received at the last meeting. There's a number of changes to the site plan, we added a planting strip behind the sidewalk, between the sidewalk and the building, at, at the front of the building. So, so that provides some additional landscaping over there. We removed the sidewalk at the, at the west side of the building and sort of just incorporated the Greenway Trail as the circulation on that side. And then we also reduced some of the sidewalk around the back of the building, but left it going towards that curved plaza area, see in the corner. We also updated and now show connections between the Greenway Trail and the Mill Street sidewalks. There, there should be a crosswalk up there, and we showed additional information on the surrounding area. So, one of the things we talked about at the last meeting was trying to figure out if we could do some land banking of parking. The owner circulated a survey to the existing tenants, they got very limited responses, I think that they, they got like eight or 10 responses of people said they were potentially interested in possibly renting studio space in, in the new development. So, you know, I don't know if that's enough to go on to, you know, base land banking on that, but, you know, what we're, you know, the applicant does want to do land banking, so we're hoping that we could discuss some kind of number we could come to an agreement on. I, I know our consultant initially said to land bank 15, John, I think you said construct 60 or 65 at the beginning, you know, and then these can always be called into play if there's an issue, but, you know, it'd be nice if we could provide more landscaping, especially near the entrance, and eliminate some of that hassle.
Yeah, I, um, the analysis where you said you could reduce 15 was over shared parking.
Yeah.
In which the planning board could waive that parking, so you wouldn't have to land back bank the 15 spaces.
That would just be.
Yeah, you, there is a provision in the code, if you have two uses that don't have similar timeframes for parking needs, you can waive or reduce the parking requirements.
So those, those would go away altogether?
Yeah, so you could, in theory, take those 15 off the table and only have to land bank whatever you needed over, under 80 spaces.
Right.
You would end up with, whatever you think the land banking potential might be, or they might think it and you might agree to, or whatever. But I, you know, I would love to see less than 95 laid out. Now, the concept, this is still a concept plan before the planning board, or now, before the planning board, but the council has to agree to it, so you can't do too much that you would, wouldn't get the council to agree on, but you have to have good rationale for waiving a certain number of spaces based on time considerations, shared use, and then you could land bank on it in addition to that if you felt that there was the ability for a certain number of the residents upstairs or the residents next door to use the space downstairs and not need it at a separate parking spot.
What would be the advantage of pushing a land banking requirement, or pardon me, what would be the advantage of just eliminating the, or reducing the parking requirement as opposed to pushing the 15 land banked space?
Because you could permanently landscape that area and design it such that that didn't have to be set aside for future parking.
And part, part of the.
Because when you land, land bank something, you sort of have to keep it holding and clean so that they could convert it to parking if they thought it was necessary.
Well, okay, but this is a, I mean, this is a, this area is flat as a board, it, how much landscaping would they, they, anybody would realistically undertake in the space, would that restrict them from dealing?
Well, I, my feeling is that the first 11 spaces there, near the entrance, would be much better as a landscaped area with trees and other sorts of uses to buffer that view as you come down Front Street from the, you know, instead of seeing a line of parked cars, you would see a nice entry drive with landscaping on both sides of it before you get to the parking lot. And you could do that if you were willing to waive a certain number of the spaces.
Yeah.
So, so land banking would be incompatible with having trees growing there?
Because ultimate, if, yeah, because with land banking, in the event in the future, it's determined that you need those spaces, then the trees would go away, and it would be developed as parking, so you wouldn't get the benefit that, that Mr. Clark is suggesting of the landscape, the landscaping. It would be a permanent.
You get, you get the area, 15 more spaces is more permanent landscaping.
If the result is you need more parking spaces, then overall, you'd be better off yanking the trees down and putting the parking spaces in, right?
That's a call for.
I mean, I, I just don't see what the advantage is of getting rid of the banking, the bank parking spots in a situation where it's this, there's not, it's not like this would enable further development there.
It would allow better landscaping.
Yeah, in my view.
And the other thing is, you know, because they're trying to squeeze 95 spaces on this site, they don't have any street trees or trees that break up those long lines of parking spaces. If you waived a few of those spaces, they could put trees so that you only had 10 or 12 spaces before you had a tree, and then 10 or 12 spaces, it provides shade for the parking and a lot better.
Isn't there a requirement for a certain number of trees in a parking lot like that?
There is, you have, but it doesn't say you have to break up a row, it just has to have one, one tree, a three-inch diameter for each 10 spaces. But it doesn't say you have to break up a row every 10 spaces or anything like that, so the, the trees that they have at the corners of the parking lot would count for that because they're in the parking area.
What's the, what's the relative square footage of the 15 spaces and their, you know, the adjacent, the concomitant travel space? Is it 1,500 square feet?
Oh, you mean just the square footage?
The potential land bank, land bank space.
What was it, nine, nine times 18? 2,400 square feet.
So it's, it's about 2,500 square feet more permanent, mature landscaping.
And less impervious.
And less imperv, two advantages, so those are the advantages.
So, so it's two issues, there's the 15 that can be waived and taken off the table, which is one decision that the, that the board would make, and then there's land, land banking after that.
I get it, I get the difference, where I'm trying to just make sure everybody here on the board is clear what the advantage is of waiving the 15 spaces is. So in my view, there's two advantages, less impervious surface, that's a positive, the second one is more permanent, mature landscaping.
There's a third one to this.
Oh, and there's more.
There's more.
There's more.
So if we eliminate the 11 spaces that John's talking about in that area, there's a retaining wall in, in that area, so it would be eliminating the retaining wall, but it would also allow them to redirect the Greenway Trail that hopefully they don't have to have steps.
That is a significant advantage, so.
That's something that the Greenway Trail Committee is adamant about in their letter.
They use the word adamant.
Adamant.
They wrote it down, they were adamantly opposed.
They didn't want steps on the Greenway Trail.
So there's, I agree, there's another, so not having the Greenway Trail Committee mad at you is an advantage in and of itself.
Good.
I'll leave it at that, so in my view, the idea of waiving, is it 11 or 15? I thought it was 15.
Well, there's 11 here, but I would suggest if you could do the 15, then you could have multiple trees to break up the, the big parking lot behind it.
Yeah, I think that, that's what you would do with the remaining.
So those extra four trees would be every 10 spaces, so you'd have a curb that it came out.
Love it.
With a tree in it.
I'm in support of it.
So that didn't look like one big expanse, it would be trees down the line.
But they have, you haven't shown that you can share, or have they submitted enough documentation to show?
Well, they've submitted documentation that, that based on the shared analysis of hours, that they can reduce it by 15 spaces down to 80. And the question is, would you want to go more on land banking? So then for, you could say, okay, we'll, we'll make them build 80 spaces, but we'll allow them to do another 10 or something in green that is reserved for six months to see if they're needed or not.
So now we're on to land banking. Are we all in agreement of the waiver?
Yeah, yeah.
Significant advantages, so let's move on then to land banking.
I just had, I just had one clarification that I wanted to ask about the Greenway Trail, if we got rid, got rid of land banking those 11 spaces, would that?
No, waving.
Don't use that term. Just waiving those 11 spaces.
Okay, waving.
There's a difference.
Yes, the land is still there, that the trail could then be like angled up that bank onto the Greenway Trail.
Well, that was one of my comments, is that.
I mean, is that how you get rid of just there?
Figure out a way to avoid steps.
Yeah, we could work our way out.
With the Greenway Trail and access over to Mill Street sidewalks.
Is the 20-foot left of a, of a stall, of a parking spot enough to get the grade? You know, so if it were like a ramp.
Well, they may have to meander it a little bit also, I mean, there's, there's ways to do it.
Do you feel confident that based on what we just said, that you can plan this in a way that you won't have to have steps on the trail?
I'm pretty sure that we have enough height to cross that diagonally, that foot used to be part of the difference.
We get about four or five steps there, Mike?
Enough said, enough said, if they're confident, let's look at it next month. We don't need to design it here for you.
Yeah.
Or you know how you're going to design it when you, we just, let's, if you're confident, let's look at it next month. Okay, moving on.
Okay, for the land banking?
I would also, the one thing I would, I would say is that I would, I would.
Sorry, Joe was in the middle of something.
Sorry, Joe.
Yeah, John, is the, can the 12 spaces at the, where I think that is south, and the 12 parking spaces, could the, can those be land banked then?
In theory, yeah, you could pick which 12 you want, or five, or six, or 10, or whatever.
Because they're the ones that kind of go around the corner.
We need access to the, to the trash enclosure though, unless we can put that.
Oh, I see. Yeah, I think it would be better to break up the third, the long stretch.
Yeah, again, if, if, let's, let's just talk about this concept of land banking, let's not design it for them.
Yeah.
Because in theory, I personally, again, for those reasons of impervious coverage, if you don't need it, don't build it.
Right, also the, I, I've done a lot of projects that involve land banking, that none of it has ever been called into use, and I think the understanding is that there, you know, still, the, the parking requirements are a little heavier than they need to be, and, and so that was a way to balance it out, but that, as far as I know, they've never been called into.
Right, so, so what's then, if we're all in support of land banking, what's the adequate number to design in for parking?
Yeah.
I mean, at this point, you know your application best, and you've made it, you've made an assumption that you think is adequate, just in terms of how many spots would be necessary, how do you, just based on what the applicant shared with us, in terms of the number of spots they want to build, does that appear adequate to you?
Um, you mean you're reducing it only 18 or 15?
No, no, we're on to land banking.
Okay, well, that, we asked them to do a survey to try to come up with some sort of estimate of how many people who lived on the property or projected to live on the property who might use the studio space and come up with a educated estimate.
Yeah, which they did.
Which they haven't done, other than what we heard tonight, which.
Yeah, but that, that seemed to be as far as it was going, but like.
All right.
I, I believe the management followed up and didn't.
It's hard to tell with prospective tenants upstairs, there's 28 units.
Right.
You would assume that if, there might be some interest of people who move upstairs having space downstairs, but how many, you have to make a guess, you land bank it, you study it for six months, if there's a parking crunch, you come back and ask them to rebuild it.
So, so we're going to ask the applicant to come back with their best educated guess and what's appropriate, okay? So great.
And, and I think we're going to base that on the fact that there's 28 units, we, we know what the standard is for that, you know, one per unit and a quarter per bedroom, so that there's something to base it on. And then I think what, what we would do is look at how many studio spaces we think we're going to have.
Great.
And, and work something out from there, because, because that's based on the square foot number, which I think, again, is heavy, so I think that, that's where the savings would come.
All right, great, I mean, it sounds like we're all in agreement on the waiver.
Yeah.
Plus, there's this gigantic parking lot.
Right.
Just, just to the north of this building, which is owned by the same person or same entity, right?
Yeah, and, and if they need to do cross easements, you know, they can do that.
Yeah, I mean, there's overflow parking.
Yeah. And then, so apart from that, Mike, you did work on the, on the foot.
With that, John, do we want to create?
So I'm, I'm also just trying to get, you know, apart from, we're, we're going to come up with a proposal for the parking.
Okay.
And then are, are we close on the other items?
So, yeah, let's, let's, I know, we still have some information we need from you as far as SECR, right, getting our SECR review done, right? So then you know what you need to get to us.
Yeah.
No need to talk at length about it, right? And then just as far as any other, I know there's still work to do relative to the engineering, but that we don't need to get to necessarily until this.
No, the only thing I would like to point out, though, is at the south end of Front Street, where they're coming into their second access into the parking lot, that's their secondary means of ingress and egress, you know, in accordance with state fire code, that access would have to have a minimum width, clear space of 20 feet. Problem being, they have the apartment building there, the cars park out in front of the sidewalk there, by the time you park the cars, you're down to, I believe I said, nine feet clear width. So somehow you're really going to have to look at how you're going to get 20-foot clear access.
You gotta work on that.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other concise, crisp, germane questions for the applicant by the board?
No. Um, I, I read that this, this is privately owned, that the streets in, in Grovel are privately owned.
That does not matter to the state fire code.
Oh, it's state, okay, that was my question.
So.
Yeah, just remember, whatever you're proposing has to please both the, this board and the council.
Right. But, but.
You chuckled. Good luck.
But you're not going to lead us astray.
Yeah, so, you know.
Doesn't it, doesn't it naturally?
Anything that we recommend still has to be endorsed by them.
Doesn't it naturally follow that if the applicant pleases us, then therefore it should please the council?
In theory.
Isn't there some kind of recommendation process?
With that.
I don't predict anything.
Is there anything else we can do for you this evening?
Can, can you tell me what you did with your hair?
I thought she was alluding to something, isn't it? Isn't it like if you get ripped off, you get a haircut?
No, no, that's what it was. That's why I was.
She was referring to my actual hair.
I think it was a threat, actually.
That's why I kept asking people if anybody saw her bite her lower lip, which I asked the question, because I couldn't, I wasn't looking at it.
We're, we're being recorded. So, thank you. Next item on the agenda, this would be, and you again? A continued review of an application for site plan approval and subdivision, lot merger, approval mixed-use commercial and residential. I don't know what to call this thing, so I'm just going to call it Fishkill Avenue.
I like it. Good evening.
Route 52.
Taylor Palmer, cutting and feder, on behalf of the applicant. I'm joined by our architect, not his great hair, Ari Seagull, and Mike Bodorff, who's who's probably got the most hair of the three of us, who continues to moonlight as Dan Kohler, who definitely has the most hair on our team. Our traffic and parking consultants, Rich DeAndrea from Colliers Engineering. And we're also joined by the applicant, Jordan Haug. As the chairman stated, we are before you for a continued review of an application for subdivision and lot line merger for redevelopment of the property for a three-story mixed-use multifamily residential project located at three ninety-seven, three ninety-three, and seven Conklin Street. The chairman may have just referred to it as Fishkill Avenue, but it's also been referred to as the Post and Stamp of Beacon. Since we're before you, your last before you on January tenth, we did appear before the ARB subcommittee, so that was our, our homework assignment from the last meeting. As Ari can discuss, we did get the ARB's comments. And the project's facade now includes more brick details wrapping around the corner of the building by Conklin Street and the Fishkill Avenue intersection. So that was a change that we incorporated based on the ARB's input. We did include our revised site plan set, and it did make a couple more refinements to the building program. The recreation area on the west side of the building has been redesigned to incorporate the three terrace patio areas. The first patio area within the garden is ADA accessible from the parking lot and the rear of the building. And then all three patios include benches and picnic tables to create green space for tenants and to work and relax outside. And then the dense plantings maintain privacy between each patio while ensuring an ecologically diverse landscape and aesthetically pleasing views for the tenants, visitors, and passersby. We have, as Mr. Clark mentioned, we have, or requested, we have also added street trees along Conklin Street and, and the Fishkill Avenue sidewalks. So with that submission, we did also include a revised I and I report and drainage report, which certainly Mike can speak to. But other than that, the board would like us to walk through any specific changes. Ari, maybe you can at least go through with the board, the ARB updates.
Yeah, I'm just curious, is what, is what I have here in front of me, is that reflective of the ARB comments?
No, Ari will show.
Good, I expected more of the ARB.
We have new information. Yeah, no, I think we covered everything except the, the building changes. So what, we had some renderings done of what we had, you know, originally proposed with some tweaks. We reviewed this with the ARB subcommittee. And I can say you see a little bit of that recreation area with the step tiers. So what, what we talked about doing was, on, on the corner of Fishkill and Conklin, they, they recommended that we wrap that corner up, you know, up to that higher parapet line with, with more brick to, to make it sort of continuous, so...
Point, point to it, because if, I hope it's the same thing, I'm honing it out right now.
That knife-bladed wall?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's out.
Okay.
So, that's a rough one.
I knew you could do it. Awesome.
Yeah, so, so we turned it around, made the corner solid, and, and indented it the same way on both sides. So that, that was the main change. And then there's also an awning over the residential entrance door.
Does that limestone cap have any relevance to anything?
It, it, it would probably match the other, it, it wouldn't be something that stands out like that. It would match that other trim.
Yeah, it's just sort of sticking out there.
Yeah. Now, that, I'm going to get those renderings redone with this design, but it's, it's, you know, this is just to illustrate.
Sorry, I know I'm not, I don't sit with the ARB, so all of my comments are late, so...
Okay.
But, but essentially it was wrapping the corner, creating that little canopy over the residential door that ties into the lower cornice.
Actually, you're not late, because we had, we had said that we might have another ARB meeting, but if we wanted to talk tonight, and everybody started to feel good about things, then we could do it here, so.
Yeah, I think, I think the idea was if, if the comments were picked up, you know, and recognized by the committee members that were there, then we could just move it along to the overall board, as opposed to going back.
Well, it sounds, I don't know if, correct me if I'm wrong, it sounds to me like you still have some concatenating to do just of comments, right, some updating?
I mean, just, I mean, basically, it would be taking this and, and getting the photorealistic rendering to match it and changing that material.
Did you, did you say there is an awning now over the...
Yeah, you can see it.
You can kind of see it.
I did one of the bare ones.
Okay, so, okay. So we'll see, we'll see the sort of final version next month, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Do you mind if I make one comment? I'll make it brief, John.
Anyway, I think that there's still something that's not traditional brick dimensions about this, which is the very tall and thin pier in the center and the, the cornice, which is sort of floating, right? On top of the framing.
Right.
I would look at that as removing that, that corner hardy board, right? And just what is more traditional in a brick structure is to have brick going from the foundation all the way up, right, to the top. And that's what you have in the, the stair piers, right? And I think that if you look at it, and you just, there's different ways to articulate it, but if you just infill that a lot, it'll be looked, it's not that much money. It'll look so much more in repose, let's say.
Yeah, I mean, that's a possibility. When, when, you know, I did look at that, and, and it seemed a little bit heavy at the corner, just with, with the proportions of it, but I don't know.
But there are ways, you know, you can break things up, and, you know, you know how to do this. I'm just, I, I had to say that, you know? And I do, I do think it'd be much improved, because those two things that are not, you know, it's what you would use with a veneer material, not with a load-bearing brick.
That was my impression from the meeting, was that it was going to be solid brick around that corner, not within fill. Hardy plank.
No, I mean, I mean, that, that can be done if everyone agrees.
Are, are you talking about the two green inset's?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, there would still be inset, but there wouldn't be...
Yeah, I don't know, just really quickly, you know, when we sort of invoke, like, historic, you know, factory buildings, having been, you know, through the years transformed by use and all of that stuff, I don't know, I always like to, when looking at those old buildings, think, well, what, what, what function did that used to have, right? Because they always had a purpose. So when I'm looking at those two big giant openings that look like, to some degree, infill, my first question is what function did that originally have, right? As opposed to being an arbitrary geometry for a new structure. I don't know if that helps, but the, you know, the, the way these end up looking as new buildings, if they're invoking this idea of historic, older factory buildings transformed over time, is what, what's the generative history? And does it kind of make some logical sense, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but there are Main Street buildings that have recessed paneled brick.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, it was just a way of breaking up expanses of brick and creating shadow lines and giving some depth to the architecture.
It would look more like that, more intentional like that, if what you're saying is those two green things were recessed, were, were brick.
Yes.
Sorry, yes. I think we're saying the same thing.
That's, we can make that happen.
Yeah, the other thing that we have to be careful about is this is a thirty-eight-foot building to the, to the top right now at the lower level, and so we're creating this higher parapet.
Yeah, the parapet's five feet high, which you can...
Right. But it's, it's not a higher ceiling height inside.
No.
Okay. So the ceiling is the same, it's just a higher piece to give a corner emphasis.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Because it's right at the height allowable under the code, we can't go beyond that.
Yeah.
Without a variance.
Yeah, no, that, that's just...
I just wanted to make sure about that, that you didn't have a cathedral ceiling in there that would break things up.
All right, what else? There's a couple of things we can do.
So, can I just confirm if I, if I make that change to the, to that brick inset?
I think so.
I think we're close enough, we don't have to have another subcommittee.
Yeah, 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 just bring it back.
I'll take care of that.
Just do that, make those updates, bring it back to us, and we'll...
Yeah.
We'll tear it apart next month. So, if there's nothing else...
I do have one quick question.
Yeah.
There's a detail for a vinyl fence, but I don't see it on the plan anywhere.
We're reviewing where, where that fence needs to be, and how we're going to provide protection, you know, fall protection at the top of the retaining wall, and also at those tiered recreation area steps. So we'll, we'll, we'll have detail and a recommendation for that. I think, I think it's probably not going to be vinyl, it's probably going to be a wood fence.
Better.
And then we'll, we'll also have the, the guardrail detail.
Okay.
Great.
With regards to landscaping...
Microphone, Mr. Russo.
Excuse me?
Microphone.
Yes, sir. Nice haircut. With regards to landscaping, especially along Conklin Street, we know we have rock outcroppings there, some shallow rock in that area. He stepped up the building. How are we planting trees?
I'll, I'll, I'll talk to the landscape designer, but, because I know she's also been speaking to Dan, and I believe that they have that coordinated, so she's keeping the rock outcropping as a feature, but not planting on it.
Well, there's trees planted right where the rock is right now, so... At least shown on the plan, yeah, so there's one or two that...
No, she, she also updated the plan, and we'll bring that next month.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we can do a couple of things. We can discuss directing Jen's office to draft NAGDEC. Any...
Motion.
Motion. We have a motion and a second. Motion by Jill, second by Karen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we can also schedule a public hearing for next month.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Jill, second by Karen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything else we can do for you?
That's it, thanks so much.
Wonderful. Are you on the next one, too?
Is that a SEACRA public hearing or a site plan public hearing?
Site plan and subdivision. If I may.
Thank you. So, next item on the agenda. It's like whack-a-mole, you just keep coming back. Review application for site plan approval, three-story retail, commercial, five thirty-six Main Street. Good evening.
Good evening. And if I say, no, I'll leave it for later. Taylor Palmer with Cuddy and Fader on behalf of the applicant. And I am joined by the project architect, Ari Siegel, our project engineer, Mike Bodendorf of Hudson Land Design, and Carlito Holt of DTS Providence, our traffic consultant. I'm also joined by my colleague, Ally Fausner. I think I left her out of the last three presentations, so sorry, Ally. As the chairman stated, we are before your board in connection with a new application, so this is our first pass at this, just kind of getting you all acquainted with our proposal. And it involves a site plan application proposing to improve a existing vacant parcel with a three-story commercial-only, no residential project located at what is known as five thirty-six Main Street, but there is no building there currently. Before I turn it over to Ari to run through the site plans, I did just want to give the board a quick background about the property for the benefit of the board, and then he can give you the quick overview of the use of the space. We first met with city staff back in, in January, on the twenty-third, about the premises. It's about a one-point-three acre lot, sorry, point-one-three-five acre lot on the west side of Main Street, again, commonly referred to as five thirty-six Main Street. It's in the city's CMS central Main Street, zoning district, and it's also in the historic district, overlay district. There's an existing three-story, fourteen-unit mixed-use multifamily retail building, if you're at the street level to the right of our proposed building. And then there's, that's at five forty-four Main Street. And then there's an existing mixed-use building, if you're looking at it from the street on the left, at five thirty-four Main Street. That was formerly Ms. Sowers' building. The northeast corner of the building abuts the city's twenty-one parking space, parking lot, which is again at the intersection of Main Street and Ver Plank, just next to Melzinga's. As the board is aware, the area that surrounds the property is commercial, residential, mixed-use, including apartments, restaurants, personal service establishments, hotel, event space, and other retail uses. So there's a mix of sort of character that makes up that corner near East Main Street, and it's sort of the fashion of those buildings. We are proposing to construct a dimensionally zoning compliant thirteen thousand five hundred fifty-four square foot retail, commercial building. Ari is going to talk about those floors, so I'll leave it to him to discuss those. Carlito, our traffic consultant, will also briefly present the traffic and parking study that is associated with the site. As is detailed in the parking study, the project's not anticipated to have a significant impact on traffic in the vicinity of the project site. Indeed, the study found that the project has a very minor traffic generator. A lot of the use that's proposed for the space is by appointment or otherwise, which we'll get into in a minute. The study also found that there's available parking in the surrounding area. Part of this application, when I say zoning or dimensionally conforming, is that it will require a waiver of this board with respect to the commercial parking. Again, we are, we have no residential proposed with the application. The proposed building will host a retail showroom for Warp and Weft, a custom and, a custom designer rug curation business. So Warp and Weft offers high-quality internationally sourced rugs that are commonly found in residential, commercial, and hospitality developments. I don't believe that Ari has the specific pictures, but we will include them in our, our next submission. Maybe he does like that, he's trying to surprise me, at Ari. So for the benefit of the board, these are some of the existing, if you just want to keep scrolling through them, Ari, the existing location in Manhattan, to kind of give you a sense. The, the owner was very, has always been drawn to Dia, and has had a lot of ties to that. And he's very interested in making his headquarters here in Beacon to really be effectively, you know, in tune with the gallery and, and type retail that you have here along Main Street. So again, the proposed building will host a retail showroom for Warp and Weft, and, you know, again, it offers the high-quality rugs that are sourced. One might say that we're a rug dealer. Now, I usually say that very fast, so rug dealer. Inspired by our artistic community on Main Street, I had to have a joke for at least every presentation, so come on, give me a break. Warp and Weft is proposing an architectural space which it can, its company's rugs can be viewed and experienced more fully through the artful facade designs. Importantly, we are commercial-only development, and it's a presently under, underutilized, undeveloped property that's going to mesh with the, we're proposing to mesh with the fabric of the existing built environment along Main Street, especially on this end of Main Street, while supporting an economically successful and environmentally sustainable Main Street. It's worth noting that the project does not propose to construct a fourth story. Of course, in this section of Main Street, it could not have one. However, consistent with those CMS regulations for development seeking the benefit of a fourth story, development project, of the, development program for the project also incorporates certain public benefits, two upper floors of commercial space, supportive office right on Main Street, and then other green building designs. So we're incorporating some of those things that if you were seeking a fourth story, would actually go towards weighing towards public benefits. There just happened to be a fully commercial building here. Procedurally, we are seeking site plan approval for the project. Other than, again, the off-street parking, again, all commercial, the project is otherwise zoning compliant. We are an unlisted act in under SEACRA, and with that, I'll turn it to Ari just to go through the building design.
I'm just sitting here thinking of how many of my colleagues will be jealous that there's a Warp and Weft in my hometown. Designers, they love this stuff. Great product.
But I just want to point, make one important point, having had to go to the dining district myself at one point in my life, there is actually quite literally a rug district in Manhattan, and this is...
You know, each one of your jokes for every application takes at least, you know, half a minute away from the rest of our lives, so... But it brings so much joy, so thank you.
Fortunately, Taylor saved me a lot of time, because he gave a third of my presentation. But, yeah, basically, we, you know, we want to stress that all three floors are commercial showroom space. So the, the ground floor will have higher ceilings, that'll be the main showroom. But all, all three floors have essentially the same function. We're, we're working out the interior layouts, you know, with, with the applicant. But it, it's basically just wall space and, you know, presentation space for the product, along with, you know, the small office, bathrooms, and the kitchenette.
So no residential, no fourth story being proposed?
No.
Okay.
And, and while we're going through those floor plans, you know, I'm, I'm trying to confirm whether or not we need sprinklers. There, there are certain conditions, and I'm not sure if the third floor makes it sprinklers, but we can...
I have to go back and talk about that.
Yeah, it says over, over the third floor, but I'm not sure that we need them otherwise. But if we do, we'll make a room for that.
We trust you'll comply with code.
Oh, yeah. So there, there are those existing easements between our building and five thirty-four. And, you know, that gives access to the rear yards for both properties, or, you know, some, some access to the rear of the building. So we would probably use that for some of our fire egress for the second fires there.
So you're, you're planning on egressing more toward the back, where your, one of your egress points, toward the back, and then
Right.
through an alley, if you will, to the street?
Yeah, and, and, and that would be paved and, you know, treated, so it would work for, for all that.
All right, so are you planning on making a connection there, too, to the parking lot?
No.
There's no way to do that?
No, we, we looked at that extensively, but... No, we looked at that extensively, but there's grade changes and retaining walls. We also...in terms of the egress, we may need to do an interior corridor because of the grading back there, because I don't think we can grade the easement, but, you know, but there will be some access back there. So there's also that back garden area, which is now going to be five feet smaller because I guess the zoning setback changed again. It used to be something where there's...you had to be 25 feet back.
That's 20 now.
Right, okay, so that changed.
Yeah, so you don't have to do anything.
Right. Yeah, so we're...
You comply.
Right, but we can also...I mean, right now, I think we're...
Oh, you mean you can move the building back a little bit?
Yeah.
You could. Is there 24 feet now, or something like that?
Yeah, so we'll bring it down to 20, so the building will be slightly larger. But we do have that landscape little garden area. And, you know, and so now, I'll just get into the...what we started with the building design. So basically, like Taylor was saying, the business has been a recognized industry leader for decades, and the brand's hallmark is design quality and simplicity. So the applicant visions and gave us guidelines for a very minimal, clean facade to reflect the design philosophy of his business. And there are nearby building examples, like Roundhouse, One East Main, that are, you know, historic buildings as well, but very minimally detailed. They don't have those traditional cornices. You know, the windows are very minimal. So, you know, there are examples nearby in the historic district.
Which examples? One East Main and what was the other one?
And the whole Roundhouse complex.
Those are industrial buildings rather than commercial storefronts.
Right.
Or were industrial buildings.
Yeah, and now there's commercial storefronts in One East Main. It was adapted, so... So, you know, and the first-floor storefront is mainly glass, so that the rugs can be seen from outside, and then you'd also be able to see that landscape garden all the way through the building from, you know, from the street through the showroom. The windows on the upper two floors are similar in scale to Main Street windows, but they're just much more simply detailed. And the applicant is really opposed to just adding on decorative historic detail to this building, because it just goes against what he's looking to do with his, you know, with the space that he's creating there.
Well, I do hope, if you feel you're ready for the ARB, that the applicant keeps an open mind about recommendations, with the understanding that there are certain design criteria the applicant would like to meet.
Yeah, and, you know, we can review that when we get to the ARB, but we think, you know, that a lot of those are being met in a different way than a traditional way, but, you know, we can have that review. He would like to do that sooner than later, so we could, you know, because everything else seems to be fairly straightforward, but we want to make sure that we can have time to have that dialogue.
Okay. Anything else at the moment? So we'll just go in reverse then, we'll take that one. Motion to recommend the applicant to the ARB for review.
Motion.
Motion by Jill.
Second.
Second by Karen, all in favor?
Aye.
And then the other thing we need to do is to authorize circulation of notice of intent to act as lead agency, so I'll accept a motion to do just that.
Motion.
Motion by Karen.
Second.
Second by Jill, all in favor?
Aye.
And then...
John, you do have Frank still on.
Oh, he's on?
Yeah, he's still on.
Well, I was going to say, that was next on my list, and I was hoping he was still on, because we do want to talk about parking, so...
Should we take our quick presentation on the parking traffic report, because we have our traffic consultant as well?
Sure.
Frank, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
We can.
Wow, we got it working.
2023.
Took four hours, but...
Yeah, when Pete got here, he fixed it.
I'm sorry?
When Pete got here, he fixed it.
Right, Pete.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, Carlito Holt, partner with DTS Providence. We prepared the traffic and parking study for the application. In our analysis, we utilized Institute of Transportation Engineers data, and this is a bit of a unique use, so the closest use we could find was Furniture Store. In talking it over with the client, since we've prepared the report and getting a better understanding of his operations, I think what you'll find in our report, and what you'll see when we prepare our response to the comments that we've received, is that, especially on the parking demand side, we're probably grossly overstating the amount of parking. The applicant anticipates a maximum of six employees. They'll probably start off with about three employees, and as Taylor alluded to, a good majority of the customers will be appointment-based, so that'll help meter the traffic, and more critically, the parking demand. Any walk-ins, a large amount of those walk-ins are probably going to be patrons of the downtown area already. They're not necessarily coming to visit the rug store, but they'll be in the downtown area and maybe pop in because they see, you know, the rugs in the window. So, you know, we've got the comments from both your planning consultant and your traffic consultant, and we're preparing those responses, but we don't see anything in there that's fatally flawed, that we can't adequately address, so...
Okay. Frank, you've been waiting all night. Your thoughts?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, and appreciate the help from Pete to get us online with Zoom. I've heard you guys great for the last couple hours, so thanks again for getting that worked out. Carlito summed it up pretty well. I don't think, looking at this project, that there's anything that can't be overcome. I do think that this project mirrors a lot of what we went through, to a lesser extent, though, what we went through on 416, 420 Main, where we were seeking to use available public parking within a reasonable walking distance of the site. And if you recall that application, we spent a lot of time figuring out what that reasonable distance is. The code obviously allows for use of public parking within, I believe, 800 feet. And there were some questions at the time as to when that parking study was done, drawing into, you know, into question some seasonality concerns, all of which are echoed in our letter. It's not the applicant's fault that they're beginning this project in the winter, but certainly the data that has been collected should be adjusted, or to the extent possible to reflect that summer or early fall time in Beacon, when I think we all would agree it's the busiest. I believe there's some available parking data dating back to last October that John Clark may have, and, John, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, you know, using that perhaps as a basis to help the applicant get an accurate picture of what the underlying condition is, and then coupled with what their real parking demand is going to be based on employees and customers, we'll be able to get a good feel as to what the parking impact actually is. But I think the analysis that we were presented called for a maximum of 18 parked vehicles, which, after hearing what Carlito said, does seem to be conservative based on the maximum of six employees and sort of a low turnover of customers. But our comments were pretty straightforward. I think over the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to hopefully work with the applicant and get the board an accurate representation of the parking seasons adjusted for the worst-case condition.
Thank you, Frank. I'm just curious, does the applicant intend to use any of the spots in the lot, I don't know what it's called, just down the street, actually next door to the next-door neighbor?
Yeah, it butts...it does abut our lot. It is a...that is a city parking lot.
There is never, ever, 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 a single spot available in that spot, in that lot?
I always park in that lot when I go to Melzinga's.
Did I emphasize ever?
I go at 5:00.
There are never any spots available?
It frustrates your life if you get one.
The one thing I just wanted to add further, and then I'll...
I never get one at Melzinga's. Sorry.
I'll pass the baton.
Frank, Frank, let Frank speak.
Is that, you know, and this came up with 416, 420 Main, is that there are several projects along Main Street that have sought this same type of relief, meaning use of public parking in a downtown area. And what we just want to make sure, as with all projects, you know, in the Main Street kind of heart of the city, is that we're not taking credit for parking that exists today, but may not exist tomorrow when things that have been previously approved are built and realized. So we will help the applicant identify what those projects are, and make sure that everything that this board has approved prior to today is being factored in that background condition.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Frank. Yeah, I mean, I'll just make the observation as a resident that trying to find parking, and, you know, it's always nice to walk to places, but when you have a four-year-old sometimes and you want to go to dinner at Melzinga's, that's not an option, you gotta drive. Parking down there is a real pain in the ass, and it's a deterrent, quite honestly.
Yeah, my office is in that neighborhood, and there's rarely parking around.
Right, and there's some mitigating factors here, where, you know, Frank makes a good point, you know, as far as the discussion about the 416, 420 Main Street. That project, of course, had two residential units as well, so they had to provide some off-street for the residential. You know, traditionally, when we're looking at the commercial parking, it's a little different, and this is not a restaurant, this is not a, you know, it is a much lesser generated...
It's adding potential need for parking, right? Otherwise, there wouldn't be, you know, this discussion about...
The Main Street Access Committee did a parking survey on a sunny Saturday during the peak fall seasons, which we figured was sort of the max need for parking on that day. It was 80 degrees. No, it wasn't 80, it was cooler. It's in its mid-60s, but it was sunny, beautiful, busy day. And so we have the numbers for that one day, which would be better than, I think, a January study. But what we found is that there was lots of parking from Teller West. The county lot was relatively empty, the city...
Near the Howard Library, near, you can find spaces in the center of Main Street where there aren't as many restaurants, but this end...
Lots of what I'm getting to. In this end, the brewery lot, the Churchill lot, what we call the Churchill lot, was 100% full, overflowing, people parked in illegally spots. The Ver Plank lot, the one that's close to this, which has 20, 21 spaces in it, that had 89%. And some of the side streets had a few parking spaces, but the east end was pretty much locked down from Teller East. It was 100% full on Main Street, the whole length of Main Street, but the side streets were available when you got west of Teller, and the Henry Street lots had available parking in, surprisingly, quite a bit. And the county lot was almost empty.
So which one's the county lot? Which one do you...
DMV.
Oh, well...
Right.
Well, the point we made is that if there's any traffic improvements and parking improvements, they need to be on the east end first.
Yeah, okay.
The city council is thinking about the lot, the old Firehouse lot.
Up by Dogwood.
By Dogwood, yeah.
It's pretty distant, huh?
Yeah, I mean, again, a deterrent.
No, but it would relieve parking from Fountain Square and things like that, One East, you know, that's sort of, those shops would be able to go east. Employees might be able to go east to that lot.
It's only two blocks to Main Street.
What's that?
It's only two blocks to Main Street.
Yeah, yeah. You could have designated employee parking up there, which would help. We also reminded everybody that there is a free loop bus. You can park at the county lot and take the loop bus anywhere on the Main Street if you're willing to wait for it to come back. And there is side street parking available, and we proposed striping all the side streets so that it would be much more efficient, and people would recognize. What we found is that there was 100% parking on Main Street, and people were driving around looking for spots when there was a spot a half a block away that they didn't know for sure whether they could park there or not, because it wasn't striped, and it's in front of a house. So we proposed striping all the side streets within a block, so that people knew that it was public parking, and driveways wouldn't get blocked, so you wouldn't have residential complaints, so...
If, once you find your way back up behind East Main, up in the whole south and north, it's a...you get lost, and everything's one-way, and then you get spit out somewhere on Ver Plank, and forget it, I'm going home.
Yeah, there's steep behind there, it's steep parking behind there.
Am I right?
The east end is a real problem.
It's a pain in the...
That was the conclusion from the parking survey, is there's not a parking problem until you get to the east end of Main Street, and then there's a real parking problem.
John, what was the date of that?
October, mid-October, I think it was.
All right, we're just going to check against when Rodney...
I copied it and sent it to R.A.
Yeah, I think, because Rodney Weber had paved his project across the street, and everyone from that lot had to park in John Anthony's lot when the paving project was taking place, so I'm going to...
Just check the dates, yeah?
Check the dates.
We didn't know about that, if that's true.
Oh, yeah, so we'll check that.
His lot...
It doesn't get pretty full, though.
Oh, I'm not saying it doesn't, but that was a particularly rare, everybody off...
You're saying he was paving in a Churchill location?
Yes.
And his apartment building was okay?
Okay.
It was all the new, yeah, for the DPW project, and repaving all of the on-street or off-street parking for the apartments in October.
We blew past 11:30, so... Are we good? Anything else from us at the moment?
That's actually...
We still have, we still have two certificates of appropriateness and a law. Okay.
Thank you.
Subdivision.
I was just going to ask if there's any way you would consider doing the...
Oh, yes, it's your... Oh, great.
Certificates of appropriateness.
Yes, yeah, yeah. I mean, we have to sit here and suffer, but no one else. Yes, Mr. Segal just asked that very question, and I concur that that is a smart idea. So we're going to go to the certificates of appropriateness. Sorry, I didn't mean to snap at you. First one is for a sign at 259 Main Street, and this submission baffles me, because I only have two copies of the application. So, hi, good evening.
Who is this?
Good night, safe home. You're the applicant?
Hello, members of the board. My name is Andrew Rodriguez. I am the founder of Healthy in Color, a plant-based meal delivery service company that wants to offer a variety of ready-to-drink smoothies and cold pressed juices to the community of Beacon. Our goal is to make healthy eating easy and convenient by incorporating fruits and vegetables into our customer diet. I'm here tonight to describe the sign, the sign that I have planned for the 259 Main Street Beacon, New York. The sign will be created and installed by Superior Sign Services, a company known for its quality work and exceptional service. The sign will measure 32 inches.
I'm sorry, I got to stop you right there. Do you have any visuals, anything we can look at?
I submit the...
Where?
This is the...
Scroll down a couple pages.
Yeah, I don't see it, sorry.
Then you know the other one, this one's gone.
Oh, forgive me. Please continue.
So it will measure 32 inches, will be anchored by iron, and with a height of eight feet from the ground. The colors of the rainbow will be used in the design to reflect our brand's name, Healthy in Color. The material used to construct the sign is door-bon aluminum panels, which is lightweight and easy to work with, while also being durable and weatherproof, and will stand the test of time. We believe that this sign will be an excellent addition to our store, attracting new customers and helping us to stand in the community of Beacon. We are confident that with the quality of the sign and the strategic location of our store, we will see a positive impact for this business idea. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments?
That's the old Macha Thomas space, is that right?
Sorry?
Is that the, in the old Macha Thomas...
Is that the, in the old Macha Thomas space?
Yes, yes.
Are you, will you be using the bracket that's existing, or did they take that?
They take their sign to their location, and, but they're gonna hook it up to where that sign used to be.
And, so just graphically, can I make a comment?
Yes.
The, the large HIC in the, in the middle of the circle looks out of character with the, the typeface below it. So I'm wondering if the, if the HIC should be the same font, just a suggestion. If you looked at that. Do you know what I mean?
No, can you explain?
So the, the HIC in the middle of the, it's sans serif?
Yeah.
And it's like blocky, very blocky?
Yep.
And the, the, all the lettering below it is serif?
Yeah.
And so it just, it kind of clashes in, to my eye. So it, it looks like the HIC inside the circle should be like, like the one, or vice versa, make the lower ones.
They should have the same kind of design, all the letters?
Yeah. I don't know, what do you guys think?
Well, I wouldn't want to step on your, if, if there's a logo or a brand associated with both of these.
Well, we create that, and we already are planning to have that one trademark the way it is.
Do you have the sign made already?
No, not yet. I mean, I'm gonna call the company tomorrow after this meeting.
Very hopeful.
I wanna make a general comment on that block. I don't know if anybody noticed, but I don't know if it's something about, a lot of the signs are circular on brackets. It's almost like it has, there's a, like a Disneyland effect. And a couple of blocks where there's new stores, this is a little different. This stands out because it's a round top. But it just reminded me that, I didn't know if there was something in the sign code that encouraged circular signs, or because of the dimensions.
It's just coming out through the collective unconscious, I think.
I guess so. Any, any general comment?
Any strong objections, anyone?
No, I'm just wondering, size-wise, how it compares to the other, like, signs in the neighborhood. Is there any?
That's a good question. It's thirty-two inches.
Yeah, it's like the width.
Almost three feet.
The, the company that is gonna create this one is also the company that has created the other one in the building. So we are using the same company that worked before. So that they are kind of working the same sign and design for that one, for that one store.
Yeah, I think to my, to my eye, they all look relatively of the same.
Size.
Size. I'll accept the motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion by Karen.
Second.
Second by Jill. All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
God, we gotta, we gotta get a new cast of characters in here.
It's a rerun.
It's like watching Cheers, like for fifteen seasons. Hi, good evening.
Hello. So this is.
Actually, you know what? It's always a pleasure to see you.
Oh, thank you. Here we are at nine Rambat Avenue, which you previously approved. The owners started construction. There was a couple interior changes and then just some field conditions. And so she, she wants to change the original design and simplify the roofs on, on that new addition. So it's a shed roof there and a shed roof over the side porch.
So you're going from the peaked side porch roof to this shed?
Yeah, shed. And then a shed in the front without that peak at the end.
Motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion by Jill.
Second.
Second by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
All right, let's talk about the law. I don't know about any of you, but, and I didn't want to say this at the outset, but it seems to me like they're taking our gas stoves away.
That's exactly what you're doing.
They're not gonna take them away. You just can't put them in.
Well, so.
In new construction.
I was being facetious, but yes, if I'm reading this correctly, the result of the law in instances of new residential construction, because I understand, for example, commercial cooking is exempt, is that anyone choosing to build a new house in Beacon who wants to put a stove in it or an oven will have to be an electric unit. There's no more cooking on gas in Beacon.
You're correct.
Which is awful. I don't know about you guys, but I cook on gas. I love to cook, and I hate cooking on electric. This is terrible.
I cook on gas, and in like twenty-ten, when we lost power for three days in February, I was able to matchlight my stove top and make food for myself.
Exactly.
Which I would not be able to do without a generator if I was subject to this. I'm also kind of curious, if somebody's got a house with like steam radiators, antique radiators, can that be accommodated with an electric system?
It can, it can. Look, honestly, air tempering, HVAC, all of that can be accommodated, accommodated through electric. That's fine. Hot water heating, electric, fine. Everything but cooking. And quite honestly, I'm curious, natural gas for cooking, what is the environmental impact? And you make a really good point. The offset of generating that electricity.
From a coal plant.
Yeah, well, natural gas is methane. It's like mostly methane, so that's the, that's the issue.
So I think the city council's intent is to, just for new homes only. So anybody building a new home, they would have to build it with, you know, all electric.
All electric.
As opposed to, you know, allowing gas, or, you know, oil. So those things would be pretty much not allowed.
That's all clear.
And in addition, they want to also, with somebody that's gonna replace the heating equipment in a home that's, you know, going under a major renovation, they would also be bound to that same standard.
That's all clear. That, that all makes sense. And again, it's all, in my view, for every other system you need in a home, electric, the technology's there, the equipment is there, you can do it. Except for the, I don't know, maybe this will phase out when I'm gone, but except for the quality of life of the experience of cooking on gas. No. If, honestly, if I bought a, a piece of property in Beacon, and I don't know, maybe I should know better, but, and, and somehow, after buying that piece of property, I wanted to go build myself a house with a gas stove and found out that I couldn't, I would be ripped shit. Seriously.
But is this, this is, this will be instituted statewide at some point, correct? We're just jumping at the gun?
Potentially. I mean, I think that that's, that's sort of the direction things are going.
So if someone, if someone had an existing home, so not new construction, and they said they wanted to totally redo their kitchen, like, you know, so they, they would have to come for a building permit, right, to do a full kitchen remodel, they're gonna.
Right, but, but that permit there, that's less than seventy-five percent of the overall square footage of the house.
Right.
So they wouldn't be required. Plus, with just a kitchen remodel, most likely you're not replacing the furnace or boiler.
No, but I'm saying if they.
Right, so it's only, it's only, only if you're doing more than seventy-five percent of the house, and you're also replacing the boiler at the same time.
Okay.
Then you would be required to go over to electric heat. And at that point, if you're doing a major remodel on a house, usually you're ripping everything apart, you're re-insulating the exterior walls, you know, things like that. So you're probably, it's, it's, it kind of gets you to the point where electric would be very efficient, you know, but if it's a, you know, but if you're doing minor work in the house, it doesn't pay because if you're not re-insulating the walls, especially the older homes, where there's either nothing in the wall, or there's, you know, there's brick stacked in the walls.
Exactly. You're describing my house, which is built in eighteen ninety-four, has brick infill, no sheathing.
So we're talking about new construction, right?
That's it.
So cooking, cooking gas, what is the, what is the environmental harm from cooking gas?
There's internal fumes and, and then there's leakage in all the pipes is the main issue.
So once you're, once you're.
And the intent, the, the long-term intent is to, is to, is to not use fossil fuels in this country at some point in the future. So that requires not having distribution in new construction.
Once you get over the.
And, and you're gonna be able, and everybody's gonna be able to use their gas stoves, their, whatever gas appliances in existing homes. Always gonna be.
No, no, I get, I get all that stuff.
Honestly, once, once you get over the fact that there's dioxin in all the beef you eat in America, then you can get to, once you solve that, once you solve that problem, you can get to the utopia of no indoor air pollution from your gas stove.
Well, that's kind of, that's kind of my point.
This is the utopian part, right, that we're.
Yeah, I think it's very practical.
It's what?
It's a very practical proposal. It's a practical way to deal with the real problem that we're all gonna be facing in society.
We need to make steps.
Yeah.
At some point.
And, and I think it also is practical because it saves money for developers. It's actually less expensive and more efficient when you do that work to do either heat pumps or convection stoves. It saves money, it's easier.
I get all this stuff. I just don't like cooking on any of that crap.
Nobody's gonna make you do that.
A friend of mine who's like a gourmet cook, home cook, she's not professional, she's really good, recently switched to induction stove top.
That's what, that's what Karen just said.
And she likes it. She, she said it took about a week, and she loves it.
Yeah, heard.
I'm sorry, we're, this is, this is part of our normal meeting. Oh, thank you.
That's been picked up, and it's making the rounds.
It's now, it's now a meme or whatever.
It's a meme.
It's viral. No, no.
Not unless you renovate more than seventy-five percent of your house.
Anyway, well, I don't know. I'll just, I'll get over, I'll, I'll have to get over it, I guess, for the sake of the environment. Sorry, could we, I'm sorry, thank you. We just need to finish our, our conversation. We appreciate your curiosity and interest, but, good night.
Good night.
Because people insist on shipping bottled water from Fiji in cargo ships, burn massive amounts of fuel oil, you can't have a gas stove anywhere. That's, that's what it comes down to.
I'm just gonna, just gonna keep buying old houses.
The Fiji water really is from Fiji. Yeah, so people burn fossil fuel to.
All right, let's get, let's stick, let's stick to that.
What is it that, I saw the city council referred this over to us, and in some manner wanted us to opine on it. What is it we're supposed to opine about?
What the hell do they want us to talk about? I think someone, Drew had laid out a few of those.
If you have a furnace replacement, do you have to get a building permit? Like, let's say your furnace fails, your, your heating system fails.
I can't, I wrote them down, but I can't find.
If your furnace fails and you have to replace it, yeah, you're supposed to get a building permit to replace it.
So she mentioned.
Like, is this, is this our assessment of whether we would vote in favor of it, of what we think ramifications have, would mean from the context of sitting on this horse?
How should mixed uses be handled?
What puts us in a position to know whether this is feasible?
Enforcement.
So this is not a required, this is not something that the city council was required to refer to. Anything changing the zoning code, the city council is required to refer to this board for your advisory comment. This is outside of the zoning code, so they're just soliciting your opinion.
They're tossing it across the fence to see what comes back.
Yeah, so I think we should, there should be some investigation into like the source of electricity and how much we're really going to, like, what kind of impact we're really gonna have by making people angry that we're taking away their gas stoves and.
Look, I would, I would say that.
Or we should maybe think about, like, going slower with the cooking, as, you know, like.
Till, till all of us old farts die off? I don't know.
Yeah, so specifically, here are the things that the city council specifically wanted to know, whether you think it's realistic and feasible, and whether you have any questions or concerns about implementing and enforcing.
So, so they're, and quite honestly, as a planning board, eh, but as residents with the opportunity to weigh in, maybe we'll have something to say. I, I honestly don't think it's, I, I, look, I think it's well-intentioned.
As, as a board, do we have the opinion that it's easier to implement for new construction?
It's much easier to implement for new construction. And I look, I think we're just supposed to, if, if there's something that we think is useful and relevant to the city continuing their development and then adoption of this law, then we should share it. But honestly, as a board.
I think it's worth it. I think it's, it's the future. It's the way of the future. You can't keep using.
And I think if we, if we have the ability, I'm sorry. If we have the ability to either support or oppose.
And if, if we're not, if we're not supporting, then what specifically we're not supporting?
Well, that's, it is, that is, that's our informed advice. We're being asked to give advice.
I can give you, I mean, my advice, my advice is straightforward. I certainly am in agreement on the overall goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions. In terms of whether this is realistic or feasible, off the top of my head, I'd say it probably is. But I don't see any information in what we've been given that would, I mean, what proportion of new construction or major renovation is going electric right now in Beacon as opposed to other sources? What's the relative cost? Those, like, right, those would be two considerations right there that, to say it was realistic or feasible, give me those two metrics.
So you don't have the information in front of you to feel, you know.
Yeah, I'm open to give.
Apply on whether it is in fact realistic or feasible.
I'm open to the proposal, but I think a couple dollar and cent metrics like that, even though the first one isn't dollar and cent, it's just what, what, percentage-wise or whatever, what are people currently doing? I mean.
Yeah, the new construction with the heating systems, it's what's happening on the ground already. So that seems totally feasible. I think clearly it's the cooking, the stove that seems to be, you know, that people have the most issue with.
Sticking point.
I think also what Bruce alluded to, when he said if your major renovation is gonna be to the point where, like, a lot of houses aren't being, where you're gonna tear it down to the studs and have the luxury of removing all the brick infill and really re-insulating in a way that the house is efficient enough to, to have all electric heat. But a lot of houses in Beacon don't meet that criteria, and maybe a significant renovation that the owners are considering hadn't included tearing off all the exterior siding and, you know.
Yeah, that, this is lawyer David speaking. The, the one other thing I did definitely notice is the definition that is provided for a major renovation. Any, anyone worth their salt in terms of reading codes and being able to come up with a pragmatic approach forward would avoid this. You would simply do it in phases and never hit the seventy-five percent thing and done. Like, I mean.
So, yeah, so caution about the phased approach to.
Just, I just.
Coming under, you know, doing it over.
I'm not saying that's, that's necessarily a bad thing either, but it.
Squeak, squeak by the, you know, the sort of intent of the law.
Specifically because it may be too onerous for a lot of homes unless they've got the resources to tear them down to the studs, you know, which we're certainly seeing a lot of that happening in town, but I'm just saying, like, you know.
But again, it's all, it, again, it makes it feasible if you're doing a total renovation.
Right.
You're ripping it out, re-insulating, doing things like that. And those are the only two conditions. It's either the renovation that's more than seventy-five percent, or it's a new home, you know, new construction. Existing, right now, it doesn't apply to anything other than that, you know, for an existing home. So if you do a, you know, like you said, a minor kitchen renovation, you're not required to do that. If you're replacing, you know, the furnace dies, and, you know, you replace the furnace because it's not addressing that. So, you know, again, I, I think that this law is probably one year ahead of what the state's currently proposing. So eventually, it will come down the line and probably incorporate it through, you know, either the state, you know, energy code, or some other means, you know, to start enforcing some of these things.
So you're saying this was gonna hap, this will happen anyway throughout New York State, but later than when the city of Beacon.
Right.
Correct.
And in that, in that connection.
If we're doing it, if, if they enact this, let's say at the end of this year, I believe, I believe the state is like a year behind in their current proposal. It's just a matter of how long it takes the state to, to come to terms on what they're looking to enact. I know they have the committee that's working on it, but.
It's not been passed yet.
Why wouldn't the city just wait until then? Wouldn't that law then encompass?
Choice of the city council, I.
They don't have better things to do?
Your, your question may answer, okay, look.
You're, you're, you're questioning my answer, so, okay, look, the one other thing
I would say on this, and I, I definitely wanna go too, but just the one other thing I would throw out there is being, with that issue of potential state legislation, it would seem to me that if the city's gonna pass this, it would be prudent to be thinking about the issue of preemption and in particular, I would be in favor, personally, would be in favor of structuring the law in a way so that if there is a state regulation that is doing more or less the same thing, the local law disappears.
Automatically.
Right, without even having a question about whether there's a preemption question because I-
Then it gets really confusing.
If we have two overlapping standards, that's gonna be a mess.
Is this gonna be part of the, the energy code or part of the, uh, building code, I mean, for the state, do you know? Or is it like a law?
I think the energy code, I don't, do you know if it's gonna be added to the energy code or-
It would make sense that it's-
What, what part of the, the uniform code? Is it the, the energy?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know where they're gonna put it, how they're gonna do it. Right now, it's, right now, there's no, you know, there's no limitation. You're allowed to do, you know, pretty much the energy code limit to, um, or basically regulate on how much insulation, things like that, and also, um, the efficiency of the, uh, you know, the equipment you use, so if it's oil-
It's, it's not the fuel source, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Look, I, I, quite honestly, I'm just, my, I'm stretching my brain to think of anything useful that we can share back to the city.
Based on what-
From the planning board perspective.
You support the overall idea to reduce, reduce emissions, um-
It's a good thing to go on record, but-
Um, you may not have enough information in front of you to, to be able to opine on whether it's realistic or feasible.
Fair.
Um, to David's point, caution against a phased approach to the renovations to avoid that 75% threshold, so you do 30% renovation year one, you do another 30% renovation year two, ultimately you're gonna get to a whole house renovation, but you avoid having to totally-
Which may not be a bad thing, I mean, it-
Yeah, so caution against that, um, and then the last thing was, um, the preemption issue.
Yeah, fair.
Can we address the source of the electricity? Like, whether it's a clean, you know, clean source, like, we're jump, you know, we're, I'm wholeheartedly support the effort, but is it, like, going to be effective?
Yeah, so like, right, so what if your electricity is sourced from a natural gas-powered, you know, plant?
Or a coal plant.
Or a coal plant.
Which is gonna be-
Oh, the hypocrisy.
Your electricity is sourced from the grid, you're talking about the selection that's being made about what grid suppliers you want to have your part of the bill allocated to. Whoever is supplying to the grid is who's supplying your electricity.
Yeah, I don't know that we can go so far as to regulate where people, you know, what suppliers.
No, but the point is like, is, are we, is it really doing anything?
It's not doing anything unless people try to, you know, select suppliers that are creating-
It has upside. Can I tell you, one thing is 100% of the natural gas is that you, you, comes into a house is fossil fuel use, right? And there's a potential that 100% of your electric, electricity, or at least a, a large significant part, could be from renewable sources that don't cause, uh, climate change, right?
Even if it's coming from fossil fuels.
The idea is that eventually we transition to sources that can be made renewable if they work in parallel, that the, 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 the transfer to renewal, renewables is a different, uh, uh, program, you know, and a different, like, set of, uh, challenges and stuff, and that'll, but it's only gonna happen from electric power, is the point, that's why they're saying, and also, every building that's built that doesn't have a gas pipe in it will never be retrofitted to put gas in.
This is why we should shut down Indian Point, this is specifically why we should bring back Indian Point, put it back online again. You know, I'm just, I'm being a horrible criterion.
So I'm, I'm in favor of sharing those points, yes. Circulate those back to the city council. Yes, um, so, motion to share those, those specific points that Jen enumerated.
Motion.
Motion by Len.
Second.
Second by Karen, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we have, do we have unanimous consent to share all of those points that Jill enumerated with the city council? We just need two ayes.
I'm by Jill, John mentioned.
I'm sorry, Jen, forgive me, I'm so, I'm, it's late. You expected me. Um, I will accept a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Good night. Aye, all in favor, aye.
All right, well, nice to meet you.
Yeah, nice to meet you too.